Business is the pledge, which I will lead if anybody would like to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Much more effective than the Zoom one.
That's right, although you did a great job.
Thank you.
That's right. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda. The recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Charles?
Second.
Second was Jill. And now I don't have to call the roll. We can vote on our electronic devices. I know. It's going to take me a second. The agenda is approved. Next item of business is public comment to address agenda items. Okay, thank you Kathy. That leads us to item agenda number three, which is our information report on the launch update. Welcome Ben to the podium.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Good to see you again.
Literally.
Yes. I got a haircut and I shaved so you could recognize me. It's been a long quarantine at my house. Yeah, yeah. My barber said I was the second worst he's seen, so I didn't quite, quite make it.
Congratulations.
So yeah, it's my pleasure to introduce this report tonight. This will be year three for us, coming before you here in the spring and talking a little bit about our highlights with launch. This year, we're a little bit late. Typically, we go in April. We push that back, obviously, for a number of reasons. But that also allows us to give you a little bit more detail about what's happening currently in our summer session that we normally wouldn't be able to report on. So excited that we have another year of great highlights for you. Things continue to go really well. And I'm just excited to be able to introduce Dr. Nicole Lemon and let her walk you through this report. Thank you.
And I will make a comment that I failed to make, which is we will take comments and questions at the end and they have added the slide number. Slide numbers to each of the slides, so that as your jotting down notes, that will help us reflect back to which slide you may have a comment or question on. So, sorry about that.
There you go. Thank you. It's great to see you all in person. It feels right again, so it's nice to be here. And I'm the first one back, so that feels kind of cool, too. So we will cover four areas in our updates tonight. So just some overall program updates from the year. We'll talk about enrollment and our projections moving forward. For the first time, we'll be bringing in some really detailed student performance data. You guys have requested that, so we have that information for you tonight. And that's the piece I am very grateful that you gave us some more time to get together because of the current climate we were working in. And then we'll talk budgets and next steps. So as a reminder of what we are and where we came from, so we are still providing quality content to the students of Missouri, designed, developed, and delivered by our teachers. For context, we started as SPS Online in 2011, which now feels a really long time ago. I've said a lot in the last few weeks that who knew what we started back then would be so relevant now? I feel like our career, my whole career has really led to this moment and that we were poised to really assist not only the students in our community, but our whole state. So still doing the work right here at home. We have three core beliefs. As again, as a reminder, maybe new information for you. The first one is in that orange box and that is that we are not a software company. We are educators. So each of our classes has an educator on the other side of that screen who cares about kids. Today, I ended the day with putting out a discussion board to our 1,000 teachers that we have this summer and just asked them to share a moment of gratitude from the first week. And I'm going to PDF it and send it to you because what they're saying about being an educator right now in this climate is so important for our kids. So really inspiring stuff. Students' opportunity isn't limited by where they live. So we know that. We've known that for a long time, but especially now, where you live should not dictate the access that you have to education. And I love that we're working together as a state. So again, never been more important. We are now 277 partners strong across our state, which is an incredible number when you think about that. This time last year, we were at 197, so we've grown quite a bit. Still see our biggest districts joining us and our smallest from all over our state. I just had a great conversation this week with the Ferguson School District who will be joining us. So lots of still growth occurring as we continue to move forward. So last year, at this time, you approved us to open two regional offices. So I just wanted to report that Launch St. Louis and Launch Kansas City have been up and running since last September. Those offices have been integral and immediate support, that regional support that we needed. Face-to-face office staff there assisting with devices and technology more regionally. And then we have awesome training facilities. So we hosted three times this year, Launch and Learn events. We actually finished our last one right before this crisis broke in Kansas City. So I was driving home when everything started to, we started to hear all of the news of the closures. So we've really enjoyed having those spaces and those teams that help provide that really local support. So the law that really kicked off the expansion from SPS Online to Launch was the mocap legislation. This is really the first year that we've seen that come to fruition. So the catalog did go live in the fall, so that replaced MOVIP. What happened is it is full of for-profits except for our district. So we are the only nonprofit provider in the catalog. We are part of the mocap catalog, so we really cover our partners in two ways. We cover them with our partnership, but we also cover them legally. So by having our classes in the catalog, they're able to say that they meet the requirements of the law. So we have all of our middle school classes and all of our high school classes in there right now, providing those to families across the state. And this is what enrollment looks like. So this time last year, 20,000 looked like a whole lot. And as we reflect on where we are today, we ended the spring semester serving 65,600 enrollments. So those are seat enrollments. You cannot predict anything like this. This was enrollments we had before COVID happened. So this was just enrollments from, to be honest with you, the law, the results of the law. And those are students that would have gone outside of Missouri to for-profit providers. So the fact that we've been able to keep them in the state of Missouri is what the vision was at the beginning and it's working. The number that you see in front of you right now, that 82,592, takes into account the 37,000 current enrollments that we have for June and July. And we're still enrolling and then just moving forward last fall and last spring. So we haven't done any projections off of that other than just to say we think we'll be at least that big and then we'll see what happens. So predicting in this climate, as you can imagine, is almost impossible. And then this is what it looks like when we look at our own students versus our partners. I do want to highlight that we grew still from 13,000 internal enrollments to over 22,000 internal enrollments last year. So while we still are only making up a fraction, if we were to take off the statewide, our internal growth is still exponential as well. So a lot of growth you'll see with our graduating class, a lot of those students and high school students, as well as serving really at-risk middle school students that we were previously losing in our system. This is a number that I couldn't be more proud of. So we paid $4.4 million in stipends to teachers last year. So that's tuition dollars staying right in the state of Missouri, paying to our teachers. Right now, 51% of our teaching staff still comes from Springfield Public Schools. So we hire internally first and then we seek partnership applicants after we fill our internal pool. Couldn't do without our partners, especially right now. For example, Rockwood sent us about 6,000 enrollments, so we needed their teachers for the summer, for sure. But our teachers love working with Launch and they love that that's all retirement-eligible compensation that they're receiving. Another piece that we've really watched this year, we have a large number of LGBTQ students who are using Launch programming for their full-time school. We have heard from this community of students particularly that they believe this to be a very safe environment for them. We have a number of transgender students who self-identify to us. Of course, we let their teachers know. Through that conversation, our teachers spoke up and said, "We need more support. We want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of these students." So we worked with our Office of Diversity. We worked with Brian Vega, a counselor in our system. And we put on a training for LGBTQ sensitivity that we hosted in May and we had 431 teachers attend that training. Incredible feedback from those teachers of, "Thank you for those resources. Thank you for giving us language to use. Thank you for teaching us what it means when a student has preferred pronouns." And so that was a really awesome opportunity and they're asking for more diversity training moving forward. So this is a group of teachers who believe that we're an inclusive environment and want to welcome all students from across the state. When we look at our own demographics internally, we are a very inclusive program. So when you think about choice programs in our system and people are choosing Launch as a way to take their classes, we are one of the most inclusive, if not most inclusive, programs. So our data almost equals exactly what our overall district demographics are. So highlighting a couple of areas for you. You can see at a free rate, we actually have more students from the free population taking online classes than the regular seated environment. Our black population is also higher. One thing that sometimes people don't understand with virtual education is can you serve students with IEPs? And we serve a lot of them. So over 8% of our population have an IEP. And we work closely with our internal stakeholders on ensuring those students' accommodations and modifications are met. So if we look at Launch as a statewide program, so this is statewide high school data. So when we look across the state, this is what we see for our credit-bearing classes. So you can see our pass rates in those classes. So this is the high school data overall. And then when you look at our internal SPS data, it almost exactly matches it, which we expect that it would. So this is our overall pass rate versus our fail rate in our high school classes. So we wanted to dig in a little bit more. And so we spent some time with the data over the last few weeks, looking at in core content, when a student takes it online versus seated, how do they perform? And so what you'll see is overall, we have about a 10% higher fail rate than seated classes. And then you can see that broken down by the different content. The classes that are included in here are the classes required for graduation. So English 1, 2, 3, and 4 are required. Science classes are required. Social studies classes. So we are comparing class to class. Couple of things I want to note on this is the N. So obviously, a lot fewer classes take, are taken with core with Launch. And that's because if you're a student at Kickapoo High School, you're taking English at Kickapoo High School. You're taking math at Kickapoo High School. The numbers that you're seeing in the N here, we served about 610 students full-time virtual this year. So those are kids who did not attend our seated high schools and those numbers almost exactly match up to the Ns in these core content. So these are students that many of you have attended their graduations with us. These are kids that we've perhaps lost to our system, but a seated high school did not work for them. So they're moving to us and we're trying to find the right path for them to graduation. So we know that these numbers need work. So a couple of things that we are aware of, if we have a full-time teacher in that content area, our scores are higher. So as we continue to add staffing, might we, you know, look at full-time teachers in English, full-time teacher in science? So we know that. We are really proud of our math scores. We almost exactly align there with seated. So the other areas are continued improvement areas for us as we continue to move forward. So this, if you guys don't remember, is Creighton Taylor. And some of you attended his graduation right before this crisis broke. So Creighton was actually supposed to do the pledge of allegiance at the next board meeting and be honored for his accomplishment when we were no longer allowed to come to board meetings. So Creighton says hello. But I do want to draw your attention to the number of graduates that finished with Launch this year. So these are graduates who did not attend a seated high school. So 75 students completed with a traditional diploma. 57 of those were on-time graduates. The rest were either a six, a five-year or a six-year grad. 86 finished with Missouri options with us. So those are students that weren't, didn't have the credits to go the traditional route that worked with our teams to graduate. Again, 72 of those fall into this year's cohort as an on-time grad. We are blessed to have two full-time graduation mentors that are covered through Launch revenue. So Launch pays for us to have two full-time grad mentors that are essential. So they knock on doors, they're meeting with these kids because they're not in buildings. So if you've ever met Matt Burke, he's an amazing human. Jared Dummett, we hired in January, who we absolutely couldn't do this work without. A huge dream of mine forever has been to have our own high set testing center. We've been asking for a long time. Because of the crisis, testing centers closed all over the state. I want to thank OTC publicly for staying open. They were the only testing center open in the state. Their president kept it open for us and we were really happy about that. And so we got approval for our own. So Dussey approved us to have our own high set testing center. So it is now open and we started testing our first students yesterday and it's right across the hall. So huge win for our kids. If you think about the barriers that they face trying to explain how to park at OTC and get in or park at MSU and navigate that campus and find the testing center, we have kids who just give up. So the fact that they can be greeted at the door, welcomed into their testing center. We let them keep their hoodie on, you know, all those awesome things that we do and we love about kids. So we're really proud of it and hope to keep it going. So this is what our graduates look like for the graduating class of 2020. So the good news and the delay in presenting to you is I can give you that final number. So 76% of our graduating class of 2020 took an online class during their high school career, which is just amazing. We continue to grow. And I was joking with my team that technically everyone took an online class this year, but by the end. But we'll stick with that was a true Launch class that we offered through our program. So we landed at 76. So fourth quarter, our worlds all shifted and obviously, we were happy to provide our partners with some really great opportunities for students. Within the first really three days, we established a content catalog that they could use with their own teachers and we did not charge for that service. So Bruce called vendors. We got every vendor to agree to up our usage for free. No vendors charged us so that we could roll this out to the state. So we took 33,410 enrollments in about a week so that we could get that forward. So we are very blessed in this system to have a learning management system, Canvas, to have resources. We have very, very large districts that do not have anything. This is not a small district problem. This is districts all over the state weren't prepared. So we were able to just put them in Canvas and give them a teacher and let them keep going. We also instituted our no-harm grade policy, so grades couldn't go down. And then we did something really unique in Launch where we allowed them to pause their class and join us back up in the summer. So we had some kids who were like, "I need a minute to figure out what's going on." So they're rejoining us or they could drop their class without penalty or tuition. So partners were super gracious for that. And in the end, it actually didn't really affect enrollment that much, but for the kids who needed it, they were really thankful that we had that option for them. So this is what our profit and loss statement looks like after this year. So you'll see the green column are actuals for 18, 19. So that's where we ended last year. So you'll see that amount under the budgeted amount. So when we were with you last year, we estimated revenue at 5.7 million. We ended the year at 9.4 million after we saw the huge increase. Obviously, that does come with more teaching costs, so we have to pay our teachers. You guys have always been gracious when Dr. Jungman comes and says, "The Launch team needs more help. We need to hire immediately." We've been allowed to respond off of the typical hiring cycle. So publicly, thank you very much for that. So you'll see our cumulative net is at 5 million after this year. When we look to next year, you'll see again our projected budget. If we just roll forward fall and spring and looking at summer revenue, we're at 13.6 million. So we will be adding some additional staff to our team immediately and look to see our net operation again around 2.3 million. So Launch is financially sustained at this point. So for next year, we're going to open a K5 elementary school, so stay tuned for that. It's going to be fun. So we have to respond to this crisis. Districts need us, kids need us. What we have been able to do this summer, thanks to the amazing curriculum team, I can't give Allison's team a shout out enough. It's been what they have done to make sure we are ready for this summer and ready for fall is huge. So our National Park Curriculum is super popular. The kids love it. And then the Olympic Park for July. And then next year, we will have a full K5 catalog. We will also be rolling out our content catalog for districts to purchase with their own teachers. At teachers, districts cannot afford a $250 half-credit bill for every kid in their district right now if they have to go into a closure situation. So how might we just sell the content to use with their teachers? So we're working on that model. And then my dream is coming true. We're opening our own Launch Virtual Learning Center, August 2020. So we'll hopefully have a nice open house that you all can visit. We're out of space. So we're currently at Studi, if you want to come over and check us out. So we're in the Studi library, if you want to see us, and some classrooms that were empty for the summer. So we're making do and it's a great house to rent, but we're looking forward to our new home when we're ready to move in in August. And then finally, we've started looking at out-of-state content providers. So we do have districts seeking our services outside of the state of Missouri, particularly with our content. So our content is an asset to our district. It's something that we've designed and built and is beautiful and meets standards. So there's a lot of work that will have to be done to make that happen with crosswalking standards and some systems improvement. But we do have some districts that are interested in piloting with us. So those conversations are starting. You all did a good job of not asking questions.
We are practicing. Now we're going to open it up for questions and comments. That's right. Jill, chomping at the bit.
Awesome. Okay. I have both a question and a comment. My question is, do you have a max number beyond which you couldn't feel good about our ability to either meet the needs or keep the quality? Because you're going through the roof on the numbers, which we predicted. But do you have a place where you feel like, wow, that wouldn't work beyond that?
So if I were to have asked to give that two years ago, I would have set a number that we've way exceeded. So I think what we've been able to do is come to the board, come to Dr. Jungman and say, "We have the revenue. Can we have the people to support it?" So as long as that model continues, I feel like we're in a great place to support the program. What we did this summer is absolutely incredible. I, you know, I don't, I don't believe that will ever happen again, but we don't know what the role we're in right now. But we were able to really quickly respond. And I do want to share the feedback with you because we're hearing your help desk is amazing. The content is amazing. The kids love the classes. The teachers love it. So so far, we've been able to respond, but it will take, continue to take more staff.
All right, so here's my comment. Your expertise is matched by your enthusiasm. I love to listen to you talk about what you all are up to. It brings me so much joy. I thought earlier when you said it was going to be hard for you, this is going to be hard for me to do without crying. But, you know, I'm from New Jersey and I cry. But this, what you all have achieved is the proudest thing that I've witnessed since I've been on this board. And I've done a lot of things that make me, and by the way, I can make other people cry, too.
I know. It's not nice.
Stick with me.
It's not fair.
I am exceedingly proud and I am grateful to have had the seat I've had to see it so up close. So I also want to say that this is something that I talk to people about in terms of my gratitude for working with John Jungman. Because he is the one that started talking about this before anyone was talking about this. And as a result of that, SPS has been prepared for something none of us could have predicted. And as you have mentioned several times, and I appreciate that you have focused on it. Now I'm going rogue and saying what I want to say. Not only were we well-prepared for our children, some of which in the room, I know your children and you know that mine have received the benefit of this also. But we have been able to provide this for children everywhere in this state. And I just can't find words to thank you enough. Though I keep trying. You're awesome.
Thank you.
Love watching you.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
More questions or comments?
Had to be done.
Does mocap have any of the accountability data that you guys just presented? Or, or just, I should know this, I don't. Does Dussey have any kind of accountability measures for all the providers that are in mocap to show what?
They do have, they do have accountability measures. I don't know what will happen this year, to be honest with you. Because their office has been shifted around. It's, you know, they're trying. So they haven't yet asked us to give our data. So if we haven't been asked, my guess is the other vendors haven't been asked yet either. So they do have metrics around EOCs, which we didn't take, and then course pass rates and completion rates. So we are able to provide those now again. The elementary kids, we lost to a for-profit provider because we didn't have it. If that's any indication of what we might see, I don't think their data will look very good, but we have not yet been asked to provide that.
Is there, even though the accountability measures are there, is there any teeth to it for after the fact? Depending on what the accountability measures show?
The law says they can be removed from as a provider.
I want to make sure that.
But again, it would take somebody monitoring that and then actually removing them.
If it's anything like charter struggles, it probably won't happen. But I do like the accountability thing. I think that is really, really important to show how, how it is working.
Yes.
The other thing, and Phil didn't mention this tonight, but our NCA accreditation, which we have a slew of our courses, which is not the expectation for mocap, right? So that's another level of accountability that we encourage to another, a review outside of our district.
So we continue to be the only vendor with quality matter certification and one of, I think there's only another, one other that has any NCAA-approved classes.
Other questions or comments?
I have a comment. So there were several things that you said tonight very quickly because I know you were moving. You just very quickly, but a couple of things when you talked about the additional staff salary and about that's retirement contributions is for the considerable decision for our staff. But I know you needed to get through that quickly.
Sure, I can back up.
But that, that just alone is quite an amazing fact. This program has provided in compensation to our staff, that additional ability to pick up. I mean, there was no way that whatever happened before Launch, that's a great, a great thing. I just wanted to point that out because you would give it pretty big. And then the other thing in talking about the testing center, so, and that was slide 16. So I'm not sure that people understand or can really know how much that means to a student that has not had success in a traditional school. To have someone that will help them navigate all the things that are required just for even the Missouri options diploma and then certainly the testing, navigating the testing centers. And then until you've been with a student that appears to be very tough and have it all figured out and then whenever you sit down and talk to them about heading to a testing center at MSU or an OTC and then you say, "Well, I'll go with you." And you go with one and they're shaking because it is so scary to them, this whole process, because they haven't had the rental mentor or the mentor to help them out. And to think that now they just pull in our little broke, our little parking lot, walk down the hall. Some places, it's not intimidating or scary. It's another thing that will mean so much to some of the students. So that's very exciting. I saw the sign on the door and I thought, I hope that means what I think it means.
We got it. I will say to tag on to that, we really looked at the rules of the testing centers versus the requirements of the high set testing center. And some of the social rules that they had put in place aren't necessarily ones that are required. So I had mentioned hoodies, but if a kid wants to wear a hoodie while they're taking their test, that isn't something that was a rule that they didn't, they couldn't wear a hoodie. But OTC and MSU have a no hoodie rule, so here they get to wear their hoodie. So, you know, we really looked at what were the barriers that might discourage a kid to feeling comfortable? And so that's one that we were able to say, "Wear your hoodie, it's okay." Pick your fight. We love your hoodie. Put it on, take your test, we're going to be fine.
Really reducing some barriers and just making some students very comfortable to.
We're excited.
Those data points are going to lead to the system data points that we're also excited about on a graduation rate for the system. While that won't be complete until this summer, because we do summer grads and we've got another month or so. But we've already hit a number that we've never hit before. Number one, and number of graduates and a percentage that we've never even been close to before in the history of Springfield Public Schools. These paths, as well as Studi, as well as everything that our high schools are individually doing right now. Really trace every student and support them is putting us in a place we've never been before. And when you see our graduation rate come out this tall, think back to this and all of those futures, as well as all the leaders at the high school sites that are making a huge difference. If you want, you'll be incredibly proud of it.
I have a couple of comments, but I'll.
I just want to applaud the leadership, but also the way you pick your team.
It's just, you think that you serve that many people, but you've got to choose these people that are having the individual daily interaction with all of these students. So if they have 20 students and they're not very good, then that's 20 who. So if they have 20 students and they're not very good, then that's 20 who can talk about the program. And that's, I think that's been another key, is the leadership of you and others that put in place that have said, if you want to be a part of this team, here's the training, here's what we do for you. And probably five years ago, 90% of the novice said, I'm clearly wanting to teach online in my subject area, and now they're embracing that. Based on the support that you give them and the support that the teams have provided, I think that in itself is absolutely amazing. But those people who are not trained as teachers to do this, maybe some now, but they weren't when the numbers are just like that. So I think that's probably the amazing thing that happens here. So it's something, you chose the people, giving them the resources, support them, and they sell all of these things. I think the numbers are amazing. I mean, I think maybe they don't speak for themselves well online. I wouldn't, you know, I'm just not a, I wouldn't be a good candidate to teach here. Hey, you want to touch that, you know, hey? But I'm, they're going to be there. I think they'll be right in line with what Steve did pretty soon, just the cause of all the things that are happening, for the community that started the point of this. And it's just not straight here. And if 50% or 49% are located in other places, to somehow be in the line, they're making it work well also, to grant, to be a whole team.
Thank you, Bruce. And I think you could take one of my online classes and be just fine.
I was going to say, we'll take, I'll take you.
I'm going to challenge you. I'm going to challenge you, Bruce.
I was watching Rita's thing on Twitter, about University of Illinois or not.
I think you're a learner.
I'm teaching for Harvard, I'm not embracing you.
I'll share a couple of comments and then we'll see if there's more. First, the celebration, which Jill has thankfully covered, but just to celebrate, first is the current crisis response in the last few months. I mean, just when you say your career has led you to this point, I think about being in the basement, teaching communication classes at Central High School. Because we're familiar with that story.
Yes.
And your trajectory, and where you're at today, and where you've driven all across the state, setting up partnerships over the years, putting miles on your car, and where you were partnered with somebody who had a futuristic vision of what could be for our school district and for our state. And then there's nothing like a pandemic, apparently, that causes you to, that causes you to flip the switch and go, okay, well, here we go. And I'm so proud, not only of the efforts over the years, as Jill mentioned, and I have chills and I'm hot, but I'm also so proud of our district for responding to the state of Missouri's needs, and for Bruce talking to the vendors and getting them not to upcharge us, and for sending out content, quality content, and letting the teachers use that so that they could meet their needs. We were all in a state of crisis. So I'm proud of our district, I'm proud of our leadership, and the team effort to do that. And so just want to celebrate that for a moment. The other celebration is, is this is a year-long report. This isn't just about a crisis that's happened for three months. When I look at this report, slide 17, which you do not need to turn to, and I think about being on the board for four years, and four years ago, we had 34...
I'll have to turn to it because I'm a maximizer. Go ahead.
We had 34% of our SPS students who were taking an online course. And we've had for four years dialogue, should we make it mandatory? Again, nothing like a pandemic to get it mandatory, I guess. But to see the current data of 76% without enforcing it, or forcing it on our students, it, you know, build it and they will come. I mean, it is becoming part of, and I believe it will continue. How could it not? It will continue, and the content will enrich itself. So I think that's a celebration, just to look at 76% of our SPS graduates are graduating with an online course is a great place for our students to be prepared for the workplace and for their next learning opportunity. I'm sure you've told us this before, but just that all middle and high school courses are on mocap, I'm sure you've told us that before, but for some reason, that just stood out to me.
We actually just joined the catalog in September, so this time last year in our report, that was not information. We were eligible under the law, but then there was a lawsuit, which got us in, it's a whole thing. But we're good, we're in there now. So we weren't part of the lawsuit, but we benefited from it.
Just to know that wherever you take the course, it's meeting the standards and is approved is a good thing. I also like in slide 15, because it seems like every year, you're drilling down a little bit more, but I think that this is helpful data, you know? And I also am very familiar with the N numbers being quite different, but still, I love that you all are looking at that. I also think the comment of having, when you see a full-time subject matter expert teaches versus an adjunct, and I'm just using that as an example that you've shared, but looking at that from different angles of looking at quality content for our students, I love that you're looking at that. And slide number 21, your last one. Can you give me an example of what you mean by K-5 elementary programming available this fall? Do you mean they can sign up for a course, or they could do their whole grade on, or like, what, tell me what you guys are thinking about that?
So because of the mocap law, families legally have a right to a virtual education. So what happened this year is because we were the statewide, really the statewide provider, 612, families who wanted an option for their elementary student for a variety of reasons, there was really only one provider, and it was a national billion-dollar company that they had the choice to go to. So in our own district, we lost money. We had to pay tuition to a for-profit provider because we didn't have the content to give them an online school. So with the crisis, we had been talking about, should this be on our roadmap, our advisory council, so we still have an advisory council that we work with, we're begging for it in December because they were losing students to the for-profit, but we weren't sure that that was a wise investment at this time. But with the crisis, we know we will have families who, for either choice or legitimate reasons, health reasons, cannot return to school in the fall. So they would be allowed, we'll hire full-time teachers to work with them, so it isn't an adjunct model. It's, you're with them during the day. The curriculum team is amazing, they're working on the content right now. What does it look like to be a second grader online? We have models, we have virtual school models all over the country to help guide. Obviously, we're going to make sure it's really great quality, but they would be with us, and we would have a teacher working with them more synchronously than our current model, which is a more asynchronous model. You know, the teacher's there as a coach, this would definitely be, I have a teacher in front of me, working with them throughout the day. So we know that there's a lot of, we believe that we will have a lot of enrollments in this because of the current crisis, but we know we just needed it to keep kids, again, from leaving our state for an education.
Thank you for that. And we celebrate the launch virtual learning center, which will be much better for students to pop in and get supports as well.
It will have a whole student center, so they will have their own entrance, they get to come in and be greeted by a full-time teacher or a graduation mentor who welcomes them. They get to be there with our team. We have a space, but we have actually an intake facility for families. So right now, when they would come in, we walked them all the way through, past all the curriculum team, past everybody, and these are vulnerable students and families. So being able to say, welcome, and, you know, taking them into a room and greeting them and getting them their support. And then just having a place for full-time kids to come. We have students that are with us because they're in a mental health crisis, and they need mental health support. But they were like in a booth here, getting counseling each week, or we were meeting them at Panera, or, you know, Starbucks. So now we have a spot just for them. So we're really excited to get it open, and I can't wait for you guys to come see it. It's going to be great.
Yes, it is great. I've walked up in the back stairs recently and had mixed emotions, which is the story of my life last few months, of, oh, they're gone, and then, oh, they're gone. You guys are, you know, you guys are working somewhere else right now.
And again, you're welcome to come hang out with us. But yes, it's going to be great.
Any other comments or questions before we move on?
I can't help but say, which one of you gets to follow that act? Who's up next?
It's Carol.
Well, you're a hero to us, lady.
Thank you, thank you for the time. And I want to just thank you guys again for the continued support. But for the flexibility on this report, I know we pushed it, and it was huge for me personally, so thank you very much for that flexibility.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, we're clapping.
We clap, but we are. We're happy to be here and happy to clap.
And I know, you can just let me, one last thing, if you don't mind. I know Nicole doesn't spend a lot of time on it, and she hit a couple of slides, but the economics is working out.
Oh, yeah, it is.
So every, you know, when we, when I asked for the board to give us permission to move forward with this a few years ago, we thought the economic model would work, we didn't expect a pandemic, and we didn't expect the law change to drive that as much, but we knew that the economics of virtual education would make sense for our teachers, and it would keep money in Missouri, hiring both SPS teachers and Missouri teachers across the state, and it's played out. And it's paid for every investment this board has made, plus giving us resources to build infrastructure for the future, not just of launch, but also of SPS and other places. So thank you for the courage to go on that path with us, and I'm proud of the economics that's benefiting our whole system, not just the kids that are in launch.
Thank you for highlighting that. Yep. Our next agenda item is contracts, agreements, and change orders, which brings up Carol Embry for the podium.
The first of many visits.
The first of many, yes.
Mr. Brenner, would you be so kind to, let's test your microphone. The audio adjusting wizard behind the curtain, or the door, has made an adjustment, and we want to make sure we capture your...
Testing, one, two, three.
There we go.
Is yours okay, Dr. Brenner? The one at the podium seems really hot as well, but maybe it'll adjust up. Okay, so I'm happy to say that all I'm bringing to you right now, so I feel no judgment, is contracts, agreements, change orders, and bids. And so as is our standard process, this information has been posted for you. If you have any questions, I would be happy to attempt to answer those for you this evening or call on someone in the room. Otherwise, you do have the next couple of weeks, and we will seek your approval at the June 23 meeting. Do you have any questions from...
Not at this time.
Very good.
Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is board policy adoption and revisions. Dr. Jungman, would you tee that up?
We've given you abundance of reading in the next couple of weeks. This gets us caught up through the legislative session of last year. You guys remember how this kind of plays out, and we're always kind of a year in the process, working with MSBA to evaluate, and then we do administrative review. We've pushed all these through, through all those cycles. You see all the content, feel free to reach out if you have any questions between now and then, and if we don't know the answer, we'll push it back up to them to see if it was a legislative fix, a legal precedent, or just a wording sometime thing that has played out. But you have a lot of reading to do, so enjoy your board policy review time.
So, John, on all these policies, are these as recommended by MSBA? And are they, I mean, if there is any particular one that we have a question on, that's what you want?
Yeah, so the top section you'll see is all of MSBA 2019C, and then there's, I think, about four or five that are updates that are just our reviews. So some little tweaks in language, or correction of something that maybe wasn't right in there that we found along the way also. So those four are our reviews, and then the others started with the MSBA review.
So if you've got questions or issues with them, then you let us know, and then we'll run through the legal cycle and recycle back.
I think one of the questions I have is maybe just, maybe just be a district policy.
Even the MSBA ones understand that we have local input into those. Those aren't just canned policy.
It's our policy.
It's our policy. So we, previous boards have looked at them and reviewed them and administrations and said, that's our local policy. It may be the state model policy, it may have been tweaked to have local language to fit SPS, so.
They all look fine to me, with the exception of changing his or her to their. They're mostly crazy.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the nerd in this thing.
The word smithing.
The word smithing they've been doing, yes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jungman. We will move forward to our next agenda item under new business, which is the transportation route approval. And we have Travis Shaw coming to present to us.
Good evening. So as a condition for districts to receive reimbursement for transportation, final routes must be approved by the Board of Education by no later than June 30. As you may recall, in October, we give you initial routes for the school year that you approve at that time. So in front of you, you see three different reports. The most lengthy one, which is about 28 pages, represents our final regular routes, bus routes for FY '20, so the 1920 school year. You see the summer, which is July of 2019, extended school year bus routes, and you also see currently June, summer school bus routes. Now you think, well, why do we have summer school routes now? We actually have four students that are, attend the Rivendell Institute of Learning and Center for Autism year-round, and so we do transport those four students. And so, and then on the extended school year routes, that represents 66 routes that are fully sped students, as well as the 27 that are blended. So those three reports represent the final encompassing routes for board approval. Because we have students currently on routes now, we do come with a request for action this evening. It's not something that we wait until the next meeting. So this is something that we are requesting action this evening. Can I answer any questions for you, if you have them?
Any questions for Travis? Because this is one of the items that we will take a vote on for tonight. Hearing none, I will read the recommended action. It is that the transportation routes be approved as presented. Charles? Thank you. Someone willing to have a second? Jerry?
I was waiting for the vote to come on.
Jerry with the second, Jerry with the second, thank you, and now we can all vote. Thank you, Travis. Our next agenda item is Professional Learning Plan by Dr. Nicole Holt.
Thank you, Dr. Leonard and board. It's nice to be back with you again. I feel like I was just here, I was, sharing with you Focus Area Two Goal One updates. And so tonight, again, it's my pleasure to be here with you and to share with you the proposed draft for the 2021 Professional Learning Plan. I also will highlight the work of the advisory. You know that that is a DESI requirement for our professional learning, and that group of champion educators is really responsible for the development, as well as the modifications to the plan that we'll share tonight. So while I am the spokesperson, it is definitely a body of individuals. And so as you think about the makeup of that advisory, we wanted to remind you of that process and who the 2019-20 representative group was. And so you can see the allocation of those elected members, as well as those appointed, and then the facilitators that actually support the work that happens when this group gathers together. So just a reminder, they are elected annually to begin their term the following year. So we just had that election, and they are required to be full-time employed teachers, and they serve in three-year terms. So that is how we appoint them, and that is how, or that's how they're elected, and they come to be the body that governs and really supports the work of professional learning. In the attachments that you received, you see the current membership, as well as the newly elected members for 2021. An important thing to note is that the new advisory does have some changes. We added, an early childhood educator was elected, so now there will be two representatives for that department, or for that programming, as well as a teacher representing choice. So we know the expansion of both of those programs across SPS has occurred, and so it was nice to see that the election did give us more representation, so that those that serve represent a larger group of the actual body of teachers across our system. So we did want to highlight that for you tonight as well. So why I'm here tonight again is the Professional Learning Guidelines from DESI require that we provide you an update annually to our organizational procedures, so the practices that we use when we gather together, as well as an updated Professional Learning Plan. Last... Last year when I came, we were in a two-year cycle, so the update was a little bit shorter because we were waiting to finish at the end of this school year. So I will be bringing just an annual plan to you. So that will start July of 2020, will last us into June of 2021. And we'll also share with you projected budget percentages for what we anticipate seeing related to the 1% funding. So just as a reminder, the PL advisory really functions in this way. This graphic and breakdown is also in the organizational procedures for you, if you want to review that in depth. But the components include them analyzing multiple sources of data that include both district data, so thinking through the priority metrics and alignment to the strategic plan, but also the annual needs assessment, which we give every year. I shared with you in Focus Area Two Goal One, that really speaks to the district learning needs that are identified by certified staff. We then use that data to develop and update the PL plan. And again, that 1% money is allocated back, a portion of it, to sites for them to really personalize and individualize the learning that they develop to support those teachers at their sites. So I'll give you a minute to read the quote on the screen. So what we know is that there are a ton of moving parts across the system that impact our students' achievement. But what we also know is that research says when we provide and ensure ongoing job-embedded professional learning that builds the collective capacity of teachers, that has a high impact on student achievement. So I just want you to know that that continues to be the mission of the Learning Development Department, as well as what guides the work of the professional learning advisory. Another way that you might spell that out is through the stair-step approach that you can see here. So when we continue to provide high-quality professional learning, we know that that impacts educators' knowledge and skills. We know that that then is aligned to educator effectiveness, and the ultimate goal of why we are here, and all of our strategic plan work, is about increasing student results for all. So I do want to remind you that we do prioritize alignment to the strategic plan. Again, I just shared updates for you on this, but I wanted to spell it out again and highlight that this work will continue to evolve and as we build connections beyond the current strategic focus area and Focus Area Two Goal One, as we expand those opportunities across Focus Area Five, which you have approved. And so we look forward to partnering with the Office of Equity and Diversity and really closing some of those gaps relative to professional learning and how we can partner and link arms to better support teachers. You'll notice that alignment in the updated plan this year as well. So you have the document, and you have reviewed it, but I just wanted to go over a couple of minor formatting changes that you'll notice this year with the new plan. So we've been really intentional to mirror language across the plan to school-based action plans that we require leaders to submit, as well as the strategic plan. So here's the overarching goal, which really is foundational to the belief of what we believe about teacher learning and its connection to student learning. So you'll also note that we have three subgoals within this plan, which look very familiar to the subgoals that you see in our strategic plan, and as well as the subgoals that we ask leaders to prioritize when they design their school action plans. I already highlighted for you the strategic plan alignment in the totality of our PL advisory work, but we also were intentional to place those alignments within each of the subgoals. Additionally, we wanted our educators to know that we realize they have goals around teacher growth and building capacity. And so it was important for this plan to align to that teacher evaluation process as well. So here is our projected 1% fund budget for this year. You'll notice that there are not dollar amounts associated with that, which is intentional, because we know that that will be forthcoming conversations and information. But what we can tell you is we do project to spend in these percentage bands. So just a reminder about each of those. When we talk about money allocated to teachers, we're really talking about stipends or pay associated with learning, right? So that is for teachers across our system, but it's also for the intensive support we provide to early-career teachers, so those in years one and two. So that is encompassed in that 42% band relative to teachers. I spoke earlier about site allocation. So you know that we do give allocation to sites, funding-wise, relative to their FTE. And so they get a percentage of that specific that they can use to personalize professional learning aligned to their SAP at their sites. When we talk about subpay, again, the learning that teachers engage in sometimes requires them to be out of their classroom. And so we cover the cost of substitutes for them to engage in that practice. We also, again, as all departments do, allocate some sort of resourcing to supplies and resources that teachers need to be more effective. And then the pie piece relative to travel, we know that that will likely change, dependent on what is forthcoming for us. But we do have some travel associated with both our specialists that serve in our department and teachers that we send to conferences as they request, et cetera. So not any major changes here to our projection, but we do realize that that will all be dependent on the 1% funding and formula. So I just wanted to close with telling you that while you see a plan that's for the upcoming year, we've already started to engage in professional learning and work for next year. We just began two weeks, we've completed five days of our site-based professional learning systems, where we invite site teams to get, to gather together annually to look at their data and to focus on prioritizing learning needs and developing plans aligned to their SAP for the next school year. So we've had several sites that have already engaged in that process over the last two weeks. And just as a reminder, the terms that you see on the slide are the standards for professional learning that Learning Forward advocates are represented when we see high-quality professional learning. When I came on two years ago, this was an intensive focus for how we can measure and align to these standards and have this be really a point of focus for our system. And so at last year's SPLS, we focused on learning communities, leadership, and learning design, building teacher and leader efficacy around those three pieces. As we've pulled back and had strategic conversations, we really focused this year only on learning communities and developing that capacity of those teams to really design professional learning that impacts their sites. So that process is well on its way, and we have received really great feedback about the days that we've had. While they haven't been in person, we still have made accommodations and feel like we've been successful. So I just wanted to remind you of those things as we start to look and project forward into next year, that we are calibrating to what quality PL looks like, and we are seeing really positive results. So that is the gist. Like I said, you have a lot of attachments that you have looked at and viewed and relative to this presentation. But what questions or clarifications might I provide?
Any questions or comments for Nicole?
Both a question and a comment, I think. First, I'm really pleased to see that you're going to hear really intentional about partnering with Equity and Diversity, because I think there is a really important opportunity at this historical moment, but any historical moment, this one in particular, I think to really push, push our ambitions when it comes to that. So I'm really pleased to see you really be intentional about that.
Yeah. Jerry?
Mine is more of a comment. One thing I think, you know, you present a plan for basically 1%, which is required by state, and we spend significantly more in professional learning than that, which I've always been incredibly proud of this district to do that, because a lot of districts are just so, I'm only required to do this, this is what we're going to do, and this is what we'll budget for. And we've never taken that stance. And I, I'm really proud of the district that we felt like not only is learning important for students, learning is important for us. And so I just, you know, I know that this is the thing you have to present to us as far as a plan, but it's, professional learning is way bigger than us in this district. And I think that's something to be really, really proud of.
And we realize it extends beyond our department, right? Like, we can't do it in isolation, and so partnering is important.
It's always been a proud thing for me for this district, because we do value it so much.
Thanks, Jerry. Anybody else, questions or comments before we move on? Thank you, Nicole. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Close some of these things, and moving right along to our next agenda item, which is major instructional goals. And our Director of Learning Support, Allison Pilly, will present.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is our.
That's a question?
Yes.
Will you approve that plan next time? Okay. I couldn't remember if that was just a presentation or a preload to the.
Correct.
No, no problem. Okay, so this is our annual presentation on the major instructional goals that have been developed this year, and we'll kind of walk through again the process that we use those for moving forward. So this is a team of leaders that have led the committees through this process of developing our standards for Springfield. Typically, they are in person with me so that they can answer any questions that you might have. Obviously, with the given situation, they send their support and would be happy to answer any questions.
Like on your phone?
Oh, yeah, I have, yeah.
Speed dial.
They are watching, I know that.
And we'll wait.
So as we go over this annually, this is the first phase of our adoption cycle. And we pull together a committee of teachers, administrators, and leaders to develop these standards for Springfield. Past this phase, then we will move into the fall, our curriculum resource and selection process. So that is comprised of asking vendors to sell, to put forth proposals on what they have resources for compared to what we're teaching or what we're looking for that year. And then after that, we will enter a phase of review and maintenance based on teacher feedback. But new this year, we, after I've been doing some research into other school districts and their practices, I would say new this year, but Denise would know that this is not a new practice. This is actually something that we kind of dug up a little bit. But we've started doing program evaluations on the programs that we are writing MIGS for. So we have worked with those committees to develop goals and measures for those goals. And we're still kind of working on completing those program evaluations. But we believe between reviewing our current status of each of those programs or content areas, writing the standards, that will help us make better informed decisions as we move forward in the adoption cycle. And I'll show, I'll go into a little bit more detail about that in a minute. So the work of the committee, as I mentioned, was the program evaluation. We, these committees were, they met more frequently. We had more involvement. Sometimes it's the coordinator and I making decisions. We really involved our committee members in every step of the way on this. And so we helped, or they helped us make the program description, come up with the goals, and I'll show you those in a minute, the measures for each of those goals, so that we can annually look at our progress and determine, are these, are these resources, is this curriculum meeting our needs? Do we need a pivot? Do we need a supplement, things like that? That's honestly something that we kind of look at on a six-year cycle now. And so this will help us make more informed decisions on a regular basis. Very intentional customer and stakeholder focus, and making sure that we are continuously asking for input from our stakeholders. And then using that information to develop our strengths and opportunities for improvement that ultimately drive our next steps. I included a program evaluation for 612 ELA, and I was just going to click on it. I won't, this is kind of lengthy, but just to kind of scroll through, and you should have access to it as well. But our goals, and then looking at, these are all just results that we've pulled together. And this was based on what the committee wanted to look at, to see if we were being successful. And this is a 612 ELA example. So again, I won't go into all of the data tables, but it's been something that's been really helpful in driving our decision-making. So the next, or something else that we worked on with the committee is looking at current research. That should be a no-brainer, that we should be doing that all the time anyway. But we were really intentional about pulling research from lots of different reliable sources and reading that together as a committee. Again, sometimes that was something that the coordinator and I would do together, and we would kind of share it with the teachers. But we really use the teachers, the principals. We were all reading together and coming up with conclusions together. And it was a really exciting process that we went through. We also looked at peer district practices to see what are they using? What are they studying? What is their, does their pedagogy look different? What are their results? And that information's been really great to look at, too. So the major instructional goals component of this, we always start with our state standards. Those are required. We're not going to stray away from those. So that's kind of the foundational document for our MIGS. We look at national standards. Sometimes those differ a little bit, and we might pull some of those in. And then we also look at local need and focus. We didn't have any changes for these content areas that we're presenting tonight from the state standards, but sometimes we might pull in, especially if it's an industry-specific course that we're looking at. And then these standards were always reviewed by teachers and administrators for input. So the content area results, there's a lot of words on the screen here, but I just wanted to kind of show you what our goals are and the performance measures that the committee came up with. We're sticking to three to five goals per content area, and they are specific to that content area. And these will help kind of guide our conversations as we look at these measures. So we have our goals, our measures. And then if you click into the MIGS, then you would be able to see for every course in 612 ELA what the standards are, if you would love some late-night reading. But these in ELA are 100% aligned to Missouri learning standards. And the committee also used the Missouri learning standards to select standards or MIGS for our elective courses. Those are not dictated by the state. Those are something that we work with teams of teachers together to pull in. So film is literature, for example, doesn't have a state set of standards. We would use the ELA standards from Missouri learning to make those up. So same thing with instrumental music. This is another content area that we're focusing on this year. This one isn't usually resource-heavy. This is more, this is what we need for our program, based on a student allocation. But still coming up with, how are we measuring success in this area? This was difficult to come up with compared to 612 ELA. They don't have a MAP test that is going to say whether our students are achieving or not. So we had to be a little creative, but still, the teachers took a lot of pride in coming up with these goals and how we were going to measure it. So similar to ELA, our MIGS for instrumental music, we do have Missouri learning standards, and then they, the teachers take those and move those into the best fit for each class. Just to repeat on visual arts, different goals, different measures. And then the same thing with the MIGS. We have state standards that we fit into each course that we offer. So our next steps are to ask the vendors for resources aligned to our standards, and we send them the list of standards that would be hopefully approved in a couple of weeks. And then they will send us resources that they would like for us to view, and the committee will work through that process in reviewing those and making a recommendation that we'll bring back in February. That is the end of the presentation.
Great. Yes, very well done. Any questions or comments for Allison?
No.
I know Denise is going to. It's one of her favorite topics, MIGS around here.
Well, this, it really is a fascinating process. And I think it's very misunderstood sometimes. But I'm glad you always explain the process and how that it is based on national standards, however the district has the luxury and has the ability to create what is, what we believe we want our students to know, be able to do. So I'm always glad that you explain that to folks. But I did, I did find your program evaluation very interesting, Allison. And I think it has a tremendous amount of information. It has, I'm not going to use the term buckets of information. I don't like that term. Lots of really good information for teachers, especially when they want to sit down and look at, where are we really in terms of what is that our students know and can do, and where do we want to get them? So once again, I know we kind of, you know, things kind of come around and go around. I know we didn't do any evaluation, program evaluation for several years, because it did get too cumbersome, too much, too much involved. But just having the idea of a, and the needs assessment in terms of, I think that will put us on a good path, put you and teachers on a good path of what does our kids know, what, you know, what are they need to know, where do we need to go in terms of our goals for them, and then the resources to match those goals. But I did find one thing extremely interesting, and that was your goal three. I think I jot it down here quickly. The lack of consistency between MAP and EOC scores for literature and informational text. That struck me because I remember back in 2005, 2006, whenever I was doing this for science, there was a huge study at the time. You may be, you may remember, I don't know if she's still doing this study, but it was a young researcher of the University of Michigan by the name of Nell Duke. And she did this huge study on, she visited elementaries in the area and just did an assessment of how much informational text on the walls of the elementaries and how much fiction they had in the classrooms. And she predicted at that time, based on. And she predicted at that time, based on a lack of informational text, reading materials for students, that in the future, students were going to have difficulty reading for comprehension and understanding informational text. And I think you found it as a, as something that we need to work on. And I think what all of her research is, what was that, 15 years ago or so, is some of those, some of the students that were probably a part of a lot of that research she was doing is, as kids are in high school, graduating, high school now, probably have that same situation. I mean, you know, it's, it's that difficulty of reading informational text. So I was really happy to see that you guys found that as something that students, that your team found that as maybe problematic and something that you can work on.
Yes.
That can make a great difference, a great difference for our students.
We think with a lot of the goals and measures, it's just bringing attention to these things that teachers maybe haven't thought about it, or it wasn't on their radar. But by providing data and bringing attention to it, it's something that we can focus on together. And we did look at MAPS scores because the standards are essentially the same for reading. They just have one set of standards for informational text and one set of standards for literature. So, but they're expected to do about the same thing. So we started kind of comparing where we were with both of those genres. And it was, it was interesting. And it wasn't always that literature was better, but it was, it was interesting to look at. And I personally have two kids that they only want to read informational texts. So, and I know that they have to have a balance as well. So I think it's just bringing light to it.
That's the beauty of an evaluation. It's a lot of work. I, I know. And when I started reading out all the data, I thought, oh my goodness, a lot of work. But if it bears improvement.
Yes.
For students and some of the, and again, I'm not hanging my hat on assessment scores, but if it still helps prepare them for all the informational texts that they are going to be faced with when they move on.
Yes.
It'll be, it'll help. So that's what I wanted to say. So I thought it extremely interesting. Good job.
Thank you.
I just ask, so you said the program evaluation research was new this year?
Yes.
And that it had been done at some point in the past? So my question is, why? Like, why now?
So we haven't done program evaluations since I've been in the department. Anne Wallenmeyer.
Which is?
This is my eighth year.
Okay. Program evaluation search in general or program evaluation research on these topics?
In general.
Okay.
And I, from Anne Wallenmeyer is kind of our resident historian. She's been in the department for a long time. And she actually had one that she could dust off and show to us. But my, my assumption is, they used to be required. They used to be presented to the board.
Okay.
And then when they stopped presenting them to the board, I think they went away, is my assumption. And because they are a lot of work. But we are bringing it back because whenever I talk to other districts and, you know, they're like, oh, well, we do that in the program evaluation phase, and this is what we do, and we do our research. And I was like, my gosh, why? I mean, we do bits and pieces, but it's not that systematic, and it's not that purposeful. So I talked to the team about it, and we kind of lined out what we thought we wanted to look at. And we started with ELA and instrumental music and art, and we're taking a stab at it.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. I mean, and certainly, you may not do it every year, you know, obviously.
Oh, we're going to.
But I mean, or you may do it every year, but on different subjects.
Yes.
I guess is what I mean. You may not do it every year on these exact subjects.
Right.
But I appreciate that context. Charita?
I'm very happy to hear that you guys are doing program evaluation. And I'm very excited to hear that you guys are doing some of the evidence-based research that goes along with it because that's very important. I sat on the community advisory task force for EDAC. And curriculum and the cultural competency related to the curriculum was one of the topics that came up quite a bit. And I like that you have culturally responsive curriculum scorecard as a part of one of your performance measures for ELA. Can you tell me a little bit about that scorecard?
Sure, I'd love to. So that was another piece, whenever I interviewed all these different districts and asked them kind of what their process was. And I would say most districts didn't have a response for that, but a few did. But it was one of my interview questions. And so one district shared with me a culturally responsive scorecard that they use to evaluate their curriculum during the resource evaluation phase. We, Evanya and I talked about it, and she was excited about it, I'm excited about it. And so I think it's another purposeful, intentional look at what we're potentially going to be implementing. And is this going to meet our needs, or what are the gaps that we need to address? So that'll be something that will, will be new this coming year, too.
I'm excited. Thank you.
Yes.
I think it's important, I mean, this work is exciting for you and for those people that are in their curriculum areas that love to teach their area, but maybe for the media, it's not, you know? But it's essential for us. It's essential for a school district, if they're going to be successful, to have this area looking at the wide range of things that, what is going to be taught? This is what our teachers are going to teach. And then the cooperation. Points in time, I think these were silos. This is kind of what it is now. But you've mentioned working with Evanya. And then we've talked about how working with professional development and all of this. And I know you've worked with Nicole on launch, on the curriculum. So to me, that's what's really now obvious and, and more open than it used to be. All of this has to work together, or it just simply doesn't work for teachers in the classroom, and it won't work for students. So I, I think this is, this is the base of what we're going to teach, and then how we're going to do it, and the other things that will be put into that. And whether it be seated or online in St. Louis or at Boyd. It's, it's important for our students then, as they go to the next level, to have these things accomplished. And it's always changing. So to me, it's a, that's what makes it exciting. It's, it's always changing. Because if we, if our curriculum in English Language Arts was the same as it was in 2000, we would not be preparing students for the world they're going to face. So I, I think the whole cooperative effort is really important.
Thank you, Bruce. Jerry?
I think it's interesting that program evaluation is now coming full circle.
Yes.
From what we used to do. But this is so much better than the way we used to do program evaluations. And so I, I mean, I'm like Bruce, I'm excited about this, and it is vital that it's, we do this. Now, whether it all comes to the board or not is irrelevant. That's not, I don't, that's not even a concern of mine. But having the program evaluation and the way you're talking about it is crucial. And that's, I mean, we didn't do that before.
No, I think, you know, sometimes things are, are done to check a box. And I, and we know that this is not a requirement, and, but we truly believe that this is going to help us make better decisions and help support teachers and students.
Accountability is what this is, as opposed to.
And they have a SIP requirement?
Yeah. I was trying to find a delicate way to say some of this, but.
So just a comment, you know, this isn't my thing, but I love your enthusiasm for it, too. I just think it's fun how much you enjoy pulling it up on a big chart.
It's, it's so nerdy, but I just love it. I do. I get excited about this.
I, I like it.
Yeah.
You bet it. And the fact that you pleased my friend here, I like that even better because she's an expert, too, so.
One nerd to another. The thing that I find most compelling about the program evaluation is that you're doing it, A, not because it's required, nor to identify a whole bunch of things to celebrate. There will be plenty of those, to be sure. But the point of program evaluation is to identify what we don't do well, and how, and to identify how to get better at doing those things. And I think doing it without being required to do it is precisely the right motivation because we'll get better.
I'll just, I'll close this out so we can keep moving on. You've done a great job presenting. I appreciate your thoroughness. And I appreciate as, as well as the comments of the board you've heard, which is challenging the process, trying something new, looking at something from a different lens, helps strengthen our curriculum and propensity. So we applaud that effort. In our next board meeting, we will be voting on these MIGS. So thank you for the informational presentation tonight, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is professional developed budget allocation. Information only, and Carol Embry will present.
I'm counting this as a workout, by the way. Okay.
You can have credit for 12 steps.
That's right. That's right.
You borrow my Fitbit if you need to.
$4,000.
That's right.
It's more than I would have had. Okay, so I did bring a number of items with me because of the order of events to come.
Don't, don't, since you have to sit down between each of you.
I can, I can do that. I will be happy to humor everyone in the room. So this next agenda item is for information. And this is a unique item that we're presenting to you because of the notification that we received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It has to do with the 1% fund. So Dr. Holt reported on the PDC 1%, and that's based on a calculation of our foundation formula. And there is a statute, basically, that says at any time the transportation formula drops below 25%, then districts have the authority to reduce that number down. And while we have definitely invested wholly, to your point, in supporting our teachers and ensuring that we're doing the right thing, we are in a very unique situation currently because we were not able to fulfill the rest of the activities that would have taken place for this school year. And so we are making a recommendation that we are able to reduce the budget down to 50%. I will tell you that right now, we believe we're going to spend about 72% of the current allocation through the rest of the year, but certainly a number of items won't occur. So we definitely will be honoring the 1% moving forward, plus the additional funds that the district allocates for other professional development. But we are bringing this to you for your consideration, and we'll ask you to vote on it in weeks. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions at this time? Otherwise, you can reach out to Carol in the next couple of weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you very much. I know you're going to miss a couple steps because our next agenda item is Missouri Securities Investment Program, MOSIP. And Carol is presenting on that.
Yes. So each year, we bring this to you for vote consideration. Last year, when we brought it to you at the June study session, our own Mr. Jerry Lee was one of the board nominees for the MOSIP program. And our district does continue to invest in the MOSIP program. And the board is comprised of teen members who are board members, they are superintendents, they are chief financial officers, and they are also executive directors of a number of associations that are connected with public education. And so they provided us with a notification. The reason we do present it as an action item is because they would really like for Kathy Luton to send this back with the information of the vote, and the deadline is June 11th. So the information presented for you is that we would approve the election of Mr. Charles Quinn and Dr. Anthony Rosetti for the two open seats for the MOSIP board.
Are you, okay, I was, I was going to ask Jerry to speak to, even though there are two slots and we only have two slots.
Right.
To vote on, the recommended action is combined. But I wanted Jerry to speak to these members.
Both of them are current board members, so they're not new. Charles Quinn is a board member at Waynesville. And Tony Ros, Anthony Rosetti is the superintendent at Web City. And so they're great board members and great members of MOSIP, and I would highly recommend they're continuing to be board members.
Do they have any motions for Carol or Jerry at this time?
Did you need a motion? What do you need?
We have, we do have a motion. Yep. Just making sure there's any questions.
We have a board meeting Friday. So that's why it's kind of.
So the recommended action is that the Board of Education casts its vote in support of Mr. Charles Quinn and Dr. Anthony Rosetti to on the MOSIP Board of Directors for a three-year term. Make that motion. Okay. Denise with the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Charles. And at this time, we will vote. Our next agenda item, the motion passes. And our next agenda item is the audiovisual parts and supplies. And we have Carol presenting that informational report as well.
So this item is anticipated to exceed the $500,000 threshold. And this is actually for audiovisual parts and supplies. Based on current utilization, we anticipate 608,098. Approximately 50% of that would be through the instructional technology budget, standard business, and potentially 50% would be supported with bond funds. As those items would be brought forward by Dr. Shaw, you would actually vote on any bond approvals for this very same vendor. But they were of 16 response, they were the lowest responsible bidder in its Earl Mutter purchasing power. We are recommending this to you for information, and we'll seek your approval at the next meeting.
Any questions right now for Carol? Otherwise, you have the next couple of weeks to reach out before we review that as a vote at our next board meeting. Okay, hearing none at this time. Our next agenda item is proposed rates and fees for 2021. Information only. Again, Carol will present that report.
So as is our practice, we posted for you the proposed fees, and the changes in red are, that, excuse me, are indicated in red. And there are not many changes. We do follow the USDA process for setting lunch prices. So you can see where there's a slight adjustment on some lunch pricing for next year. And then also tuition rates. There's a calculation that's provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. All schools are required to do this calculation, but not all schools allow for patrons to send their children by paying tuition. The before and after-school program includes some rate increases and also new items, as noted, and as well as early childhood education, the integrated programs there. We do include the pay-to-ride fee for transportation services. Those are all noted in red. And then we also include for your review, the launch pricing on the very last page. The separate document is our use of the school facility document. And as it has been our standard practice, we have a variety of groupings and different thresholds for qualifying for that and setting our fees. And in most situations, we're simply seeking reimbursement of our costs. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Carol at the? Okay, thank you, Carol. We will move along. Our next agenda item is benefits renewal. Information will be, take a little bit longer.
Yes. Okay, so I am going to pull up for your view. Run this mouse. Okay, so we have presented for you the benefits renewal. And this is standard process at this time of year that we bring this forward. The rates would be effective for January 1 of 20. I've shared with you during previous conversations in this room that our Health Benefit Trust Fund has been in a declining situation and has continued along that path. And so the work that was done this year by our broker, also working with district administration, was to come up with other ops that could help sustain the Health Benefit Trust Fund. So we did take a look at our peer districts to see how we might align with them. It's been the tradition in Springfield Public Schools that we have always offered one PPO plan for many, many decades. And we also, and you've heard that comment previously, we had not had, experienced a rate increase for a long time until this past calendar year. You approved going from 460 per employee per month to 493. And so for this evening, we are recommending a three-tier structure, a three-plan structure, where we moved a health savings account, a high deductible benefit plan, and then the base plan, and then also a buy-up plan. So as you look at the document that's posted on board docs and up on the screen, you can see that we've included the current plan in that first column, and it deductibles, and then pricing is at the bottom. The buy-up plan, you can see, has a slight adjustment to the deductibles. Otherwise, it is identical to our current plan. So if employees wish to continue on that rich plan that we offer, they may do so. The base plan sets a deductible at 1,000 for individual and 4,000 for family, and as you can see, it does not include that separate RX component of the buy-up plan. The high deductible health plan carries a $5,000 deductible for individuals and 10,000 for families, so that is all new. And show you here the rates. So as you can see, this would increase our plan from 493 per employee per month to 522 per employee per month. And as you can see, at the very bottom of this grid, the employee out-of-pocket portion on the base plan would be zero. You can also see where there are out-of-pocket premiums to be paid for them carrying their dependents, or that would be spouse or children or entire family. I shared with you a year ago that the rate adjustment needed to replicate for the spouse, you may remember that conversation, where we had really been behind on the amount that we were charging for employee plus spouse. So you can see that that adult fee is replicated. So if a person chooses to carry their spouse, they would pay 522 per month for that spouse coverage. The child, and then the children and family rates are also noted. So part of the, that will be experienced through this renewal, also carries phase two. Recall that last year, I shared that we did not bring forward the comprehensive increase to the spousal rate or the family rate that included the spouse. We wanted to approach that in a two-year phase to make it more palpable for staff, and so these new rates factor in all of that. And this is the recommendation. I'll share with you that as we look at our neighboring districts, Ozark has one plan, and it's a $499 per employee per month cost currently, and that is fully paid by the district. Hillard has three plans, where the base plan is 520 per month, and the employee pays $10 each month for that. They have other plans that range between 555 and 678. So again, if you look at our potential options for the plans, we, the premium plan would be 582, so the employee would be paying $60 a month out of pocket for that. For Republic, they have three plans, and they're very similar in that their base plan is 539. So as you can see, and I remember, Mr. Lee, you commenting about how economical our rates were for such a rich plan last year, and they certainly continue to be, and we are now reaching the point where we are aligned with others in the industry. So NIXA does carry five plans. They have an HSA, like we're recommending, and then their plans range between 520 to 678 per month. So it gives you some context of, of our regional. Here would be a potential destination for some of our employees or new employees.
Carol, so they have the base plan that is board-paid, and then they have the?
They have buy-ups.
Buy-ups, okay. So a buy-up is not an unusual.
It's not, not unusual at all.
And the buy-up is roughly equivalent to the current plan.
That is correct. It is, it is mostly the same, except for those, that box right there, that changed.
But when you rattle off, sounds negative, but when you rattle off some of the other school districts, I mean, even Ozark, for example, that's not comparing apples because their whole entire plan is, we cover a whole lot more for that than what Ozark pays.
Right.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that people understand that.
We still have a very rich plan, providing great coverage for our employees and for their dependents.
Good. Any questions at this point? Because we will review this and vote on that in the next board meeting.
Correct.
And this starts in January.
This would be effective January 1 of 2021. So when I share with you the cost of the health renewal for us, the fiscal year, that January through June period, we still have the rest of the current year plan to catch up on as well.
Okay. Any questions or comments before we move on? Okay, thank you, Carol, for that.
Certainly.
We will keep moving on.
The end is in sight, let's do it.
Let's keep moving on. Okay, our next agenda item is our 2021 budget recommendation. Information only, which Carol continues to present.
Yes.
And we, we look forward to this presentation.
I am thrilled to be giving you this. I reflected on last year, I want to warn you, I think it took like 45 minutes last year, I don't know that it'll take longer this year.
We'll see.
Yeah, well, if it's gonna be that long, I'd like to amend.
I think it'll go faster. I think it will. But I stood before you and said, you know, and I was reflecting on the work of everyone in the room, that so much work, and I know you know this, and you've acknowledged that, but so much goes on behind the scenes to create these presentations and do the lift, but we're thrilled to be able to do that for kids. So the presentation objected for you here, will highlight the budget development process, and then those primary revenue changes that impact our operating accounts and our priority recommendations that we utilize to determine those recommendations, expenditure recommendations affecting the operating accounts, and I'll, then I'll review all of that to pause for a moment on operating, and then we will close out with the other funds.
That's right. And just as a reminder, the slides numbers do appear on this particular presentation for us to jot down notes so that you can move through this, Carol. Thank you.
So this reminds you of the process, and in January, I will tell you that our Business Services team is doing work all year round to prepare for the budget year and catch up from the previous one. But with regard to building the budget for the upcoming year, we start that work in January, we're meeting with leaders, executive leaders are meeting with their direct reports, and it's a compilation of bill of work that takes place in order for us to bring this to you. You know that during the months of March through May, we are providing you with budget updates each board meeting, and re-centering on the work that we've all done together and the impact on our system. And then at this meeting, we bring you the recommendation. Fall of the June 23 meeting, we'll bring you the budget document, and I'll highlight a few items for you during the presentation. But in our system, we also bring you budget amendments every month to stay aligned to the best information we have to provide you, and we'll continue that process. So as we jump into the operating, the impact therein, we are providing you a reminder of what is going on in the current year. So in the current year, we're calculated at $71,417,000, and that's for basic formula and classroom trust fund. And we did receive a reduction notification in May that's our classroom trust fund, and then subsequently provided a communication that we should anticipate coming up in June, a decrease of $4 million in the current year. That is yet to be solidified. We typically get our communication from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education around the 20th of the month, so that will happen in the coming weeks. Transportation formula, original estimate was $1,900,000, and it has been reduced down to just over 1.7 million in the current year, and that's what triggered that statute that allows for the reduction of the budget. So this is the change anticipated currently. We have 5.6% formula withhold, again, that will be about $4 million for FY '21. And for transportation, an estimated 12.24% withholding, and that is 232,897. A reminder for you that in the current year, we have a prior year formula correction. It's something that's an unknown, and it's all share one pie of money, and it's all relative to all the attendance data for the entire state. So we will get another prior year formula correction likely in the current year. Hopefully, it won't be that significant, but we had a reduction this year. This reminds you of our local tax calculation. Budget holds an estimate of $131.8 million. That assumes a 97.8% collection rate. And a reminder that taxes are based on assessed valuation, and that is a calculation of the market value. So it's a significant reduction for market value I provide for you each year. The, it's based on the type of property, whether it's personal, commercial, real estate, or agriculture. Our anticipated change going into the new year is an increase of $864,302. That is not what we normally would anticipate. We've included in this an assumption that we may present a reduction to the collection rate, so we don't know if people will be prepared to pay their tax bills when they receive those this fall, and we want to be assured that we're planning appropriately for that. So you can see that our assumptions do include 60 million in new construction and almost 3.4 million new personal property, and that was actually already communicated to us by Green County. We receive all that information from Green County, and in August is when we will set the tax levy with you and solidify our budget at that point in time. We still won't know the collection rate, though, till we get to January. Okay? Proposition X is currently estimated at $25.8 million, and that assumes 1,049 per prior year weighted average daily attendance, and that number is listed as well. So this is based on estimates provided by the state. It's been an interesting thing to watch sales tax, you know, a number of businesses, but online sales have continued to occur, and when we get that final June information, that's when we'll really know what happens in the current year. Proposition C, for your historical context, started in 1982 as a 1% sales tax, and it's collected statewide and then distributed to the school districts. So it's considered a local tax, but it comes to us via the state. Here's our estimated decrease, and that's a 5% reduction due to the reduced statewide sales tax collections. And again, we may be in a position to adjust this once we see what, how June plays out, and then how July plays out. We will continue to monitor these numbers. So estimated decrease, 1,346,830. This next section highlights for you some of our primary revenues. We have a merchants and manufacturers tax, it's also called a SIR tax, and this is provided to us based on a tax collection of commercial property. In Green County, and it's different county to county, in Green County, that tax rate is 1.04, and it's fed to us by the county. So we don't have any real barometer in terms of, will that reduce as well? So we have assumed currently a 5% decrease, and we'll know more as those revenues play out in January. Other local and county primary sources, so we identified any revenue source that hit the $400,000 or greater and applied a 5% reduction, and that results in a $524,000 decrease potentially for interest income based on current rates, and this could change. But we're currently assuming a 30% decrease on interest income, and for operating funds, that's 544,799. I know it sounds not good. We do have some good.
Yeah.
Hang with me.
Great way to frame that.
There was more.
Yes. So I want to highlight for you that last year, our budget priorities that administration identified for forming recommendations for the system to support our students and support the teachers working with them were numbers two through five. It was all about taking care of our people. It was about strategies and staffing for under-resourced and underrepresented students, and certainly instructional and support staff impacting the classrooms, as well as supportive initiatives like lunch and other programs that take place in the district. But in March, we had to pivot, and the pivot was because of COVID-19. So we did do everything we could to continue with our current staffing levels and provide for our employees so they're ready to take care of our students. And we're proud of that work, but it does come with some other sacrifices. And as we journey forward, you'll see that we have very limited requests presented to you this evening. But I also want to point out that as we do this work, we always completely align to our strategic plan, the focus area, the goal, and also the strategies. So here are those four categories. We'll start with our team. So for staffing and salary, we are, again, maintaining current instructional and student support staffing levels. Now, we will continue to adjust as demand, but the recommendation for you to consider is that we would operate the schedules for eligible staff, and that would cost $3.66 million for Springfield Public Schools. It does include the retirement and social security and Medicare calculations on that. And the collective bargaining work that has taken place in the past several months will be presented at the June 23 meeting as well. For the benefit renewal, I just covered for you the changes recommended, moving to multi-plan options, and the total impact to our system for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, which is our fiscal year budget, is 52051. So again, that includes the second phase of the 2020 renewal, which was around $640,000, and then the remainder of that is for January through June of the 2021 renewal. This reminds you again that we're currently at 493 per month, and we'll be adjusting to per month with the two additional plans, and premium increases also on that dependent care. Whoops. This reminds us all of the great work that our board has supported, and that is that we pay a very competitive wage to our teaching staff. And the changes that were implemented in FY '15, I believe, where we increased the starting pay for these staff members, results in us continuing to maintain a hearty support of our teachers, and 95% of our employees are paid at the highest rate. And Ms. Rector provided that information in more of his area report, but this is one of our great moments to celebrate. So we'll shift now to under-resourced and underrepresented student support. We know that we have really done a heavy lift on early childhood support, and the expansion now leads us to year three, and the expansion this year, though, would be funded by Title I. So we took advantage of the new formula money that was available to us previously, and we utilized those resources so that we could be providing early childhood for those under-resourced and unders, meaning they qualify for free and reduced lunch. And these are kids that would not normally have the opportunity to participate in early childhood education. And so this coming year, the recommendation would be that our carryover funds, and this was a strategic decision that was made to utilize the, on the front end, and then catch up later with this Phase III support through Title I fund. So 872,140. We also have the Grow Your Own program, and a recommendation for some scholarships and stipends there, and then a, an additional recommendation for a cross-categorical teacher for dyslexia, also be eliminating a contracted services agreement, and that's why the net of that is 14,700. So this shows you the staffing for the early childhood expansion. This would add six additional classrooms, serving 120 students. We know that the teachers need support in those classrooms, are fund-to-manage, and so we would need six teachers and six pairs. We also would need a specials teacher, an assistant director, a counselor, and a secretary, and that's where the 872,140 comes into play. With regard to our equity and diversity Grow Your Own program, last year, amended that we would invest in training our, our teachers, our counselors, and administrators, and those individuals did receive equity and diversity training in the fall. That carried a price tag of about $175,000. That is recommended to continue in the year, utilizing existing budget allocations. We also had pre-vested $75,000 into the equity and diversity budget for operational supports, and that will roll into the new year as well. So I'm reminding you of some of the changes that were implemented last year that would carry forward, and then now this year, we would recommend this additional $25,000. This highlights that dyslexia opportunity. So currently, 10 students are served. This would expand services to, we believe, 20 students at a minimum. So it's utilizing our resource in a much higher way, more efficiently, and generating better service for students. Supports for? So we are highlighting for you, and this does change, because we do not know how many kindergarten students will be enrolled in this year, and we do have transitions that occur year over year. So currently, we're projecting a decline of regular attendance or regular students, but overall, there are the changes, 31 students secondary, 21 students elementary. We also have shown you the title and non-title class sizes, and those, I have information on how that compares to last year. There are some very slight changes that are included within those, just a slight change of .07. We went down in elementary, a slight change up in the middle level, and the same on the non-title. We're seeing some increases more in the non-title classes, which would make sense. Okay. So part of the review includes this alternative program redesign, and we have indicated that this would be reallocation of the PALS and AIM staffing, and we would move those supports into. into middle and elementary schools. Also, this impacts the Studi High School programming as well. So that carries a price point of $64,100. The Academy of Fine and Performing Arts Program, you're familiar with that. We have a price point there of $251,960 to support the staff and the supply, so the instructional support and supply costs. So moving forward to our current initiatives, we are recommending that include these costs, and as you know, part of it is a non-optional situation. We, with the closure of Portland and shifting students to Delaware, we've covered that information with you, but with those boundary shifts, that changes who is eligible for transportation and who is included then within that. Yeah, and that impacts Sunshine, Delaware, and Holland, and of course, the Portland area. Then this also includes that reduction. I believe we had around a $10,000 reduction calculation by eliminating the AIMS and PALS shuttles that occurred. We also have included changing the elementary distance from 1.5 miles to 1.0 miles presentations to you with regard to the estimates that Jonathan Sheldon and his team have provided for us. So the total of that for a permanent transportation cost year after year would be $141,625. Also noted is that temporary transfer. So in the current year, we are temporarily transferred from Delaware to the Old Sherwood at scenic, and we would do the same thing for next school year for the Williams kids. So that way, the kids are away from the site. They can easily be educated at the Old Sherwood site, and that carries a price point of $52,000. Total transportation, $193,000. This slide shows you some of the general operating increases, and some of it you've heard about already. For instance, you already approved the property and casualty insurance renewal, $215,000. We have a worker comp experience increase of $252,000, and I believe I've shared with you previously that we still are well priced in terms of our costs in this system based on our number of staff. The volunteer FBI background check is a statutory requirement. We have no option in that in changing the process that we utilize, so that carries an additional $21,000 for next year above our current year budget. We have identified allowance to support bond construction, and we believe that the appropriate way to handle these costs is to the operating fund or the general account as opposed to charging that to the bond fund since it's not specifically construction-related. So that would carry a $65,000 experience. The telecommunications support to help us in replacing our phone system, that is a primary need in our district. We have phones failing continually at a number of sites. It does not provide for a safe and secure environment for the people working within those buildings, and we need to fix that. So that's been prioritized by our administrative team. $72,000, the cost for the actual phone system would be carried through on the capital side, and as you know, anytime we're building a new building or renovating, we're also addressing the phone systems through that process as well. So total in general operation increases, $625,000. So now, I'll highlight for you some of the budget impacts. So what this means is that these are things that also carry a revenue source. And so obviously, the launch program is very much self-sustaining, and we are also anticipating CARES Fund, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act stimulus support funds. I'm sorry to reference it, but I'm including it again here because it definitely supports our under-resourced and underrepresented kids, but it carries a revenue. So, and then excess budgets. So the launch program, Dr. Lemon already shared with you these numbers, but the increase in revenue is anticipated to be $3,733,034. It is supported by those 277 partners in Springfield Public Schools, and the increased expenditures is estimated at $4,591,184 as compared to the FY20 budget. Again, that is all supported by the launch tuition and member fees that are being paid. Additional information with regard to launch, so our expenditure increases are restated for you. A return to SPS to support infrastructure is calculated to be $2,291,419, and that's a great return for our system, for the work that we're supporting. Also, we will retain a reserve fund balance. So much like we have a fund balance that rolls from year to year of our general fund with regard to launch, we will carry a 10% reserve, and that's $1,193,232. This slide references the CARES Act funding. We've included $2.3 million to support technology expenditures, health supply expenditures, cleaning supply expenditures, Wi-Fi for students, that type of thing. That is still in process of being developed, but we have enough of the primary expenditures identified. And then we, $1 million of the 6.3 million allocation that we expect to receive to shore up some of those revenue withholds that we have awareness for at this time. Mentioned the Title I before, here it is again, and we are including in the budget approximately that's additional carryover funds that would be funneled to support other increases such as staffing increases, that type of thing, to support the regular title budget. So that revenue would be increased. We also typically experience an excess of salary and benefit budget each year, so we're anticipating that would reach 500. Every year, as we hire new staff, when someone with significant years of experience departs and is replaced with someone with fewer years, there's a gap between the departing wage and the new wage. And so we are estimating currently that the staff turnover would result in $750,000 in savings. That was a lot.
You did great.
So we're going to just highlight again, I won't go over these, but I just wanted to group them together for you. This represents the operations fund changes for the upcoming year. You can see those grouped together by state, local, and federal. Groups together for you those four categories of supporting our primary focus areas and prioritization highlights, and you can see each of those listed as well. Other operational fund changes, the closing Portland is $1,370,000. Now, those positions were eliminated at Portland, but those people obtained another position somewhere else in the district. So it's through attrition that we're able to eliminate those costs. We also have included a reduction to the travel budgets of 30. That does not include impacting professional development travel, does not include impacting federal travel because those carry very deliberate strategies and supports, and so those are retained, but the estimated savings would be $436,847. We have a supply expenditure reduction of that results in the savings of $507,817. We also recommend reducing the capital projects fund transfer, and we will continue to assess our needs in the capital area, but believe that it is appropriate that we would reduce the amount of the fund balance that we're carrying each year. We have expenditures, so there are some expenditures, and I've given actually a notation there that we likely will have $6.3 million not spent this year of current year expenditure allocations, but relative to COVID. So think about the fact that we've not had substitutes in the buildings now for a number of weeks, and we'll identify that have been reduced, and that's noted there. But we have certain costs that have been reduced in the current year that are going to double up next year, such as graduation, because graduation won't occur until August. We'll have an August graduation, and then we will have a May graduation. So we've identified as best we can, and when I say we, I mean all the through this process to do that. And again, I referenced previously, but just understanding that that launch return is to nearly $2.3 million to support our operations. So overall, again, the impact of COVID-19 has been significant in the current year. It will be impacting us as we move forward into FY21. We will do our very best to monitor changes and provide you with those changes as we journey forward. We anticipate in the current year, our fund balance percentage will spike higher than the original projection, and currently, we're estimating that to be 18.4. We anticipate it will drop as we journey toward June 30 of 2021, and we don't have certain information, like will there be another stimulus package beyond our allocation of 6.3 million that would be provided to the state of Missouri for utilizing and shoring up those... So that concludes operating. Do you want to ask questions about operating, or you want me to keep going?
Keep going.
Keep going?
I'm getting a signal to keep going.
Okay, keep going. Go, go, go. This won't take long. This just reminds you that we had that fantastic support, our $168 million bond issue. You know that we set those expenditures relative to the need, and we base it on the drawdown schedules. So as we roll into the new year, we'll reevaluate how much we need to budget for to cover us through July, July 1 of 2020 through June 30 of 2021, and we have that in our bank account that is drawing interest income, ever so reduced, but still drawing interest income, and we'll continue to provide you that monthly financial report, and then Dr. Shaw provides you with the project development. I've also linked in for anyone's easy access, the webpage that takes deep on information so people can see the progress on the projects as promised, and we are continuing to maintain a very strong financial balance in that regard. The debt service funds, it works very similarly. Our principal interest and fees is set based on the amortization schedules that basically were issued. And so we set that, and the revenue is based on our local tax revenue. Now, we will be including an increase on revenue for local tax of that additional nine cents, so that's the second phase of the total 18-cent levy increase. So you'll see that come forward in our final budget. Capital projects fund, we originally presented to you the second column, the blue column there, our original budget estimates. We had our team take a look and see where might we reduce some of those expenditures as we work toward shoring up the fund balance for operating and for capital. We've reduced that down to... To support capital, $12,346,933. You can see that the primary components of that include our technology lease information. Also, we have regular technology investment of $1,365. This covers heating, it also covers roof, $1.5 million. So we're doing what we need to do to take care of the assets of the district while continuing to make prudent decisions and prioritize the funds available to us. We have some options in that in the event we would need to make further adjustments. We would not want to find ourselves in care of those assets, though. This is the Health Benefit Trust Fund. I am showing an increase. This we will monitor, and it sounds like a $7.6 million balance at June 30 is fantastic. I'll remind you that those balance of contract checks for our teaching staff drop into that account, so basically by June revenue, and then the next three months catch up on the expenditures for that account. So you see a decline occur after we move into the fall, and also a number of expenditures occur in the summer months. So the addition to the 2020 rates and then also the addition that will occur the first part 2021 also helps sustain our fund balance. We do still have the option for the base plan and the high deductible health plan that would continue to be 100% employer-funded. This is our GO-CAPS fiduciary fund, and that is Greater Ozark Center for Applied, for, excuse me, Advanced Professional. We are expecting a fund balance drop, and if you compare this to last year, we had more districts participating after COVID. We were not anticipating a tuition increase prior to COVID, and we're still not now, but what we see is that we're going to decline in the fund balance, and that is because we did have a couple because of COVID. They have determined that they need to redirect, and we'll be relying on our reserve funds. We're still totally fine. We never intended for that to be gaining in balance, and the tuition is always set at a rate necessary to shore that program up and provide opportunities for kids. Okay. That's so bad. Did anybody time that?
No, I should have, yes.
We should have timed the amount of breath.
Started at 7:10.
Four.
30 minutes.
Very thorough. I'm gonna open up to the board. Any questions, comments? Direct it to Carol, and then we can simply make comments to her about one of our biggest fiduciary responsibilities in approving the budget this month at our next board meeting. So any questions or comments to Carol at this point?
Good work.
Great team.
Complex time. Complex time, lots of delicate decisions, and looking at this from multiple angles, and I can only imagine it is exhausting. It's exhausting every year, but more so this year with trying to predict something that I would say that what I've seen is a strong recommendation, strong movement, and yeah, so we'll hear more discussion.
In pencil form.
Yes, in pencil form, yes. That's right.
Always moving.
Everything in pencil this year, that's right, Jerry.
Well, obviously, I have more information. Would you like to participate? The governor's withhold is happening early in July based on previous conversations he's had with us, and that's what we budgeted accordingly is for something similar next year as what's happened this year. But we, as you can imagine, build multiple scenarios, and we feel like this is the most appropriate one we are today with the information that we have, but we have the ability to adjust throughout the year. And most of that would probably come with capital transfer change, potentially using some more CARES funds, hopefully advocating for some stimulus dollars as other avenues, and then summing down reductions. But our number one priority, as you saw, that rose to the top that we're talking about is maintaining our current staffing level for our teachers and our support and our leadership team to make sure that we're continuing to provide our kids what the education they deserve in this complex time. We're going to be calling on our staffs to do things that they haven't done before, just like we did in spring, so we're gonna need all of them.
Need discussion among the board. I'll start just with what John just added. The, I just appreciate the number one, reprioritizing, the maintaining, I wrote it down, maintaining current staff levels for instruction and student support. Having to pivot even within our budget, and for you all to bring, you know, looking at different scenarios. I just want to acknowledge, I know there will be sacrifice, sacrifice in travel, sacrifice in supplies, sacrifice in this or that, and I appreciate that the first goal for this year is to maintain our staffing levels. I think that that is a major commitment, and I'm curious what my fellow board members, you know, think about that. And so I just want to make, I appreciate the team over the last couple of months going back and reprioritizing because, you know, everything's important. We all want things to do better for our kids, but at the same time, when there are constraints ahead, we make sacrifices, and we have to reprioritize. And I know that has been, been a lot of energy doing that, so I thank them for that, to feed that input back to Carol and John, and it takes a lot of work to do that, very thoughtful work. Fellow board members, any other discussion or comments about the...
To me, a budget is a statement of values with a few decimal points stuck into it, and our first priority has to be the teachers and the staff sort of at ground level. That's where I think the most profound work the district has done, and I think leading with that is crucial, particularly now, but you know, in particular, when so much was asked of them, and it was, you know, it's difficult to sort of constrain budgets and stuff, but it's certainly no more difficult than what we ask our teachers and staff to do, starting, what, mid-March sometime in there? And I think they more than answered the call, so I think their priority is that is not the reality.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Comments, questions?
Just because you've asked us to, I will say, I completely agree that it was critical to prioritize the faculty and staff, and I'm really pleased. A lot of companies would have liked to have done it. It's really a source of pride, and I'm grateful.
Harry, Denise, anybody? Hearing no more comments, I will move us along. So thank you for a very thorough update on our current realities. We will continue to monitor and bring forth new information as you have it. So thank you, John and Carol, for that. Moving us forward, our next agenda item is bond up, bond project updates and actions. That brings back Travis, and we have two individual votes here that track...
The change order agreement category that I always bring to you. This, you'll notice, there are quite a few. There are 36 different individual items, most of them... Most of them are small in nature. A few things that I'd like to point out. First of all, for both Sunshine and Delaware, something that a lot of people don't think about, but auditoriums, there's a lot of things from the physical education standpoint that they're not able to do. Now that these facilities are both going to have full-sized gymnasiums that are not shared with those other spaces, we're able to bring on some additional FFNE equipment that allows an expansion of that curriculum. And so you'll see that Delaware and Sunshine, there have been some credits given, deducts for our fourth package of secure entrances due to some interpretation of code regarding what's required in some of the glazing. And so those are always nice when we get those. Probably the largest special inspection testing services from Teracon, Teracon for Boyd, that's a normal expense that we have for each of our projects. It's a requirement from the city. That's a $43,000 item that they come in and they have to do all of the special inspection material testing to make sure that everything's within compliance. So nothing that is, with Sunshine, there's probably more than anything else. We're starting to do a lot more work on the existing building. And when you do that, you start getting into some things that are unknowns. And so we will start seeing more of those change orders because of that. So I've tried to highlight each of the projects, total amounts of each category from construction to design to furniture, fixtures and equipment, so that you can see those totals as well as the available amounts in each of those categories.
I drove by Sunshine today and saw all the work being done today even. So even on a very hot day, but they were working. Questions for Travis before we, before I read the recommended action? Okay, hearing none. The recommended action is that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented.
Still move.
Jill?
A second.
Denise? And you can now vote. Moving forward, the Williams pre-cast bid. Travis?
So this is an order for Sunshine and that's due to the delivery method. Because this is a construction manager at risk delivery method, it gives us the flexibility to bring different bid packages ahead of time. This is one of those items that because of the long, the amount of time that it actually takes to produce the walls, bringing material pre-cast bid ahead of time, and that way we can start production on that early and that fits within the schedule. If not, we're two months behind and it makes it more challenging. And so it's just another example of an opportunity that we have through this delivery method. But this is the, it's actually the walls and roof for, and this is material only. The contract is with Navhold, so that's what you're approving. This is very much a specialty item and so there's not a lot of people within the area that do place bids on this. But the, if just for your, if you're curious, the contractor that will do the work and provide the materials is pre-staying, both Delaware and Sunshine storm shelters.
And you had two bids there.
Right.
Any questions for Travis before I read the recommended action?
I just have a quick question. So was this, what did you expect?
It was actually less than what we expected, yes. The, they thought this was going to be higher. It actually came in well under what we were expecting. And this, this is all part of that total construction budget. So it's not on top of it, but it's just all part of it. So when, when we did Delaware and Sunshine, this particular part was a subcontractor bid with.
Great question. Over here. Any other questions at this point? Okay, hearing none. The recommended action is that the board approve the pre-cast construction contract as presented. Charles? Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce? Nobody raising their hands, we can vote. Moving on to our next agenda item, public comments. Seeing no one in the crowd. Hi, thank you Kathy for letting us know at this point.
You can come back.
You're not in the crowd, man. You're one of us.
Five minute break.
Yeah, because we've got a few.
Five minute break?
Yep.
Okay, we can do that.
Need one.
Five minute break. Either that or Bruce is taking his own. Item is strategic update, focus area three, goal one, mid-year update, which is apparently Carol.
It is. So I do need to say what I typically say, and that is that these reports are the significant work that takes on, that we take on throughout the year. And so it's actually kind of nice to do that look back and then tie a bow on progress. Progress is a good thing, right? So to that end, I'm going to journey forward very quickly with focus area three, goal one. I did add, sorry Stephen, I didn't collaborate with you on that. I don't know if you did that or not. So focus area three is all about financial sustainability and operational efficiency. And I really love this goal because it speaks to my heart. It speaks to the work that we are all doing all the time. And I didn't say, we are constantly optimizing our resources and realigning and making prudent best decisions to use those resources we're entrusted to the most efficient level and provide the highest value for our kids. That's what goal one is all about. So goal one, Carrie. And the first one is about allocating resources. And I've highlighted for you during this very meeting this evening about that phase two that occurred. We implemented that this year. So this report represents for you basically July 1 through December 31. So it's a mid-year report. You're getting it at the end of the year. We also did bring on that chief equity and diversity officer position, my friend, Ivania. Pardon me. And she started back in September to help in delivering that work and has done a fantastic job in already moving us in that way. We added those English language. Last year's budget, that was all implemented this year. And again, continuing to remain responsible in how we're managing funds and adhering to our board policy and that we would fall between 15 to 18%. If you're curious, we need a minimum of 12% fund balance in order to not borrow money. You're not considered financially stressed until you hit a 3% level. At that point, you're basically bankrupt. So, yeah, just so you know.
I don't want to be.
So the continued work is phase three of, the final phase of the early childhood program expansion that I highlighted for you this week. And you're receiving this replicated this evening because of the sequencing of when these meetings or these presentations occur. And then working through the budget development for FY '21 and now the impact of COVID-19. Under our second strategy, that's operational efficiency and work to identify ways to do the work better and to be utilizing our resources in a better way. You know very well the work that was done to bring the transportation analysis to you. And so that report was provided to you in January, but all the work leading up to that occurred in the fall. With our process improvement, they've developed some management systems that are supporting their work to a higher level and supporting our staff, our internal customers. Cross-functional teams also have been identified with regard to charter transportation services. So taking a look at what can we do, let teams do that thing and do it in an efficient manner. So the title for funds to support special needs throughout the district are also a continuation. And, and we utilize resources that are available to us through research projects and that type of thing and reading what other people have learned. So continued steps, again, I mentioned that presentation was made to you in January 2020 and then we proceeded with additional steps that were recommended in the spring. Also, we have completed improvement processes with regard to launch and assessment and accountability ways to improve on incident reporting and building knowledge. And then again, continuing just forming cross-functional teams. And we've done a fantastic job in this district of looking out. We look up and out, we look around, we go to not only our neighbors, but also across the state, best practices, educational education and helping our students be successful. We'll continue to do that. We'll do that in a, in a different way potentially as we continue to navigate this pandemic that's upon us. So our third strategy is on compliance. And you know very well, you receive the reports of our internal audit. They meet with you in open session and provide you with the reports. And so what you experienced this past year did include reports that were provided for transportation services and records retention. We also did have the business continuity work is continuing behind the scenes. Implementing and purchasing certain hardware for backup services and also a significant process manual. Bruce Douglas has done a fantastic job of developing and working with teams and doing tabletop exercises to support our business continuity and disaster recovery planning. So can, and finishing that up, we're actually working collaboratively on the final product back before spring break. And then we've been consumed with other activities. So moving on with that, we also were in the middle of a robust implementation of our time and attendance system prior to what occurred in the spring. We had scheduled focus meetings with staffs for the implementation process and also all the hardware was installed. And then continuing that internal auditing services work. So we were scheduled for a purchase, purchasing audit and they'll do those follow-up. We'll be reviewing through a risk assessment that you know is coming your way. The strategy number four is all about facilities and equipment. And you know that Dr. Shaw stands before you and provides you with updates nearly every board meeting as you approve change orders and also bids and that type of thing that occur. So support, 100% of our voters were there for us and taking care of our kids. Also, it's, you know, highlighting the culmination of the work of the community task force. We also continue to evaluate our capital needs such as roofing and HVAC, that type of thing, to ensure we're doing the right work. So continued work, as you know, is all of that completed in the coming weeks with anticipated delivery by August 2020. And you know the rest of the story. The construction of New Boyd, what a celebration we recently had on that. Delaware and Sunshine and Fulbright wrapping up. And then the work. That's it. I don't know if that's three minutes, Stephen. Did you time? Oh, I went long.
Give or take a minute. Give or take. Arrow, and questions or comments for Carol at this point?
You experienced it.
I would just say that I appreciate the year and end of the year reports because they allow us to read and hear from you and stay and keep the pulse of where you're at because there are so many moving parts. And I know there's a lot going on this season, but for both you and Stephen, it's good reminders of what all is happening. And I appreciate.
We have done together.
Well, but I mean, but, but the operational efficiencies, the studies of best practices, the audits, transportation, the construction projects, there's a lot going on. So I'm reminded of the work that you. Up next is Stephen with our next board agenda item, focus area four, goal one, mid-year update. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you. It's great to be with you and to bring forward updates on focus area four mid-year. And as a reminder, as Ms. Embry mentioned, so the first half of this year. So we'll go right through. Focus area one, once again, the goal is to provide open, transparent, effective communication with all of our constituents through information sharing and engagement opportunities to help advocates support the mission. We serve. 4.1.1, we start inside the organization and we work our way out. So this is about increasing awareness for our internal staff team. Highlights this year, our Power of One initiative, which you heard Ms. Rector provide some updates on in focus area two, was a great success. It was really important for the individual roles throughout our system, all the various roles that it takes to fulfill our district's mission. So we feel like Power of One hero did that. We increased awareness for the various roles. We sent 38 e-newsletters during the first half of the year, including 117 feature stories. And that's up 90%. 118 faces of SPS features. So hopefully you are enjoying seeing the faces that make the work of SPS possible and telling those stories each day. We're proud that our average open rate is trending up to 26%. And we believe that that can be attributed to engaging content in those e-news. SPS in focus. And that's really about providing brief updates on the district's key initiatives featuring leaders and others in the system for interviews, walk-in talking opportunities with Dr. Jungman on video. And so we did that this year. We started with an update on focus area four, which at that time, and we also provided progress as promised updates with virtual tours of the buildings that were under construction. Moving forward, we are continuing our partnership with human resources to look at staff recognition and the ways that we can continue to make that as robust as possible. We have over 220 pieces of feedback that we're. Our executive leadership team continues to analyze that and build next steps. And finally, SPS in focus will continue with new opportunities. 4.1.2 focuses on our stakeholders and how we are gathering engagement and feedback. And we're really excited. This is, we made big. Tool. So we conducted a number of thought exchanges. We focused on equity and diversity, staff recognition, advisory council, agenda development because we wanted to know what people wanted to hear about. We also focused on how we could celebrate our SPS heroes and then how we could deepen the use of thought. Ratings, we heard from more than 1,800 individuals. So we're excited to see that tool continue to be embraced in the system. We also changed how we sought feedback from those we serve. So as you know, for many years, we had continued open forums and we had great feedback from that, but we felt like we needed. In, in the process. And so advisory councils were created at the grade level. So we have four of those. Pre-K through grade two, grades three through five, grade six through eight, and then nine through 12. And those advisory councils are represented by principals, teachers, parents, community. Those are run by our executive directors of secondary and elementary learning. And so we have received great feedback there. The agendas have been developed with feedback from those that are participating in the council. We've also expanded the opportunity for Dr. Jungman to have engagement with our staff in. Dr. Jungman has visited each and every one of our schools in the morning before school starts. It's an optional time for staff together in the library for breakfast and coffee and just have informal chats to get to know one another better and also to ask any questions that they may want. So that has gone very well. We received. Continued work, thought exchange. We want to make sure this is deepened within the system. So we want to have increased training with our building principals so that they can further use this tool within each of their schools. And we are having conversations with the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools on establishment of an ambassador program, what that looks like. And ultimately help us tell the story of our district. Communication flow. We assembled a communication work group to help us with evaluating how communication is flowing through our system and how we can be more strategic in our work. And that work group included. And that work group met three times and has compiled an initial set of recommendations that has been brought forward and are currently under review by our leadership team. And they have also provided valuable information on the flow chart that the board asked us to develop to show how communication flows through. How it's being shared and to remind each group who they should be sharing that with. And so the work group provided valuable feedback on that initial draft. We have updated that and revised the infographic. It is currently under review and then we will be sharing that with our system. We will be developing strategies. These recommendations are implemented. Quarterly updates will also be provided both to the work group and to our leadership. Building awareness through our system. Many great things to celebrate here. We are trending towards growth on a number of our metrics. I think just a couple of things to highlight. We were at just over 400,000 visits to SPS.org. We're now at almost 700,000 at the first half. We've seen increased downloading of the MySPS app as well as visits to the MySPS app page. We're also seeing increased engagement on Instagram, which is a special. Students, seeing increase, increases there. And we're also seeing increased open rates in our both staff and parent newsletters. So that's a great. So, that's a great thing. We've conducted the first phase of our social media audit. We have identified more than 800 social media. Work on social media very difficult. So, we know that the first phase is to identify those accounts, to work with our building leaders to consolidate accounts and become more strategic in how we're sharing those. And then also, to bring those under the district's umbrella to help with whether it be. This first phase was critical and that was conducted. We'll move into phase two as we move forward. And finally, we've been focused on progress as promised, sharing the great work that is happening across our district as a result of Proposition S and voter approval. Moving forward, the second phase of the audit will move forward as well. This is just a graphic to show where we're trending on growth for some of our awareness metrics. And that shows the percentage of the year-end total from the previous year. So, as of December 31st, we were at 58% of the full previous year's total for SPS.org. As the number of phones that we have called with updates, critical updates across our The SPS brand. So, we have highlighted progress as promised. We have used Power of One hero and integrated that theme all the way through the system in our marketing materials. Moving forward. Analysis. And the next step will be to work with that agency to develop a new district logo, updated refresh brand that we will then roll out across our system. Feedback across our system. We are pleased to note that we have continued levels of engagement. How they feel about training, how they feel about benefits, how positive their work environment is, how engaged they are in their work. And that has continued to remain steady. We're pleased to see a 3% increase in the engagement with our leadership survey. So, that's asking our staff team to think about their relationship with. The last two years. So, we're seeing the engagement level trend back up. And we believe that is because we continue to collaborate closely with the AAA department, sending out reminders, sharing why it's important. But it's important that we continue our collaborative work as we move forward. And we have already met with our AAA team and our. Content of those surveys to make sure that the timing of those surveys going out is best, that we're asking the right questions of the right individuals and that we're closing the loop and following once those surveys are closed. It's also important to note, you'll see in the paper that the spring surveys. Survey our staff according to students at that time and families. Questions on that? More information in the paper, I know, but.
What's AAA?
AAA is our analytics data department. So, we work closely with them. They pull all of our analytic reports.
Questions or comments? Okay. Okay. So, first of all, the progress of progress as promised communication has been fabulous. I think I mostly see it through social media. So, I know you communicate with them, but I've said it before and we all agree that now we have a duty to show their transparency and keep people aware of what's going on. And I think you all have done a fabulous job of the progress as promised. Just a few. The highlights about the e-newsletter, open rate, and then SPS. Good thing it's not SPS out of focus. But SPS in focus. How, how. Or get feedback on, because just because you send an email and just because you open it doesn't mean it's communicating.
Absolutely.
So, I'm just curious, what are you hearing and what ideas do you have about feedback or assessing those means?
We are looking at ways to seek feedback as a result. So, within focus, for example, we are encouraging staff as they watch these updates to send us ideas and feedback for what they want to hear more about. And so, we continue to use that as a way to gather feedback. And the same would be true for our other way. Three councils, developing agendas, wanting people to share what they want to hear about and then taking feedback from that.
And you said that SPS in focus featuring the superintendent beginning of the school year, but you've mentioned that may shift.
Correct.
Using other people to.
90-second introduction, but just a lot of it will be reinforcing the information that's been shared, going a little bit deeper. And then, again, tagging on at the end, asking for feedback and what they want to hear about from next. And so, we anticipate there will be more and more of those opportunities.
And thank you. So, can you just share with us or remind us that the open forum was more about just sharing information as opposed to seeking it? I mean, there's a little bit of feedback, but can you describe the dynamic of how the advisor. Grade level and parents, teachers.
That's right.
It used to be.
It used to be isolated groups.
Right.
Parents or a group of teachers or a group of kids and.
So, it was very siloed.
So, it was very siloed and it was interesting. You'd get different perspectives, but they'd never share the perspectives with each other and think about. So, we've also brought the executive directors that lead each of those areas to be right at the table, helping administer those. So, I think it's a much better conversation with the whole picture represented instead of just certain facets represented.
And the feedback that we received in the older. This time, we're actually getting the feedback upfront. So, the agenda is developed in part based on what those individuals want to discuss and talk about. And that has generated a much more authentic and organic conversation.
Okay. Thank you. And so, are they advising? I mean, they are advising.
Yes. Is really in part updates that the district would like to have feedback on, but then it also is comprised on topics that have been brought forward by the group.
And how often are those advisory councils meeting now?
Each semester, one time each semester.
Once a semester, okay. Okay. And then, is it. Send a parent delegate essentially? Is that still the model?
It does. So, for our senior adult forum, our open forum has remained unchanged because we felt as we were adjusting and making these adjustments, we wanted to also have a constant in the area that was working very well. We felt like our senior adult open forum was the most. Continue to have a senior adult open forum. We also continue to have open forum at each of our schools or I'm sorry, at schools in each year pattern for our senior leadership team to come and visit with Dr. Jungman and ask questions again at informal time. And the agenda is completely driven by those leaders.
Okay. Okay.
So, that work group was part of, was added to drive the work forward. So, what we wanted to do, we continue to hear from our senior leaders just overwhelmed with the amount of information that comes to a system this large every single day. How can we streamline that? How can we make. Once it's been shared? And so, in order to analyze how it's currently working and develop recommendations, we brought forward a group of representatives of the district. So, again, we started with teachers. We have department leaders. We have parents represented and community members and partners. And so, we started. An overview of what communications look like in the district. And then, we really sought feedback from them and let those recommendations come forward.
Thank you. That helps define that. Yes, Charles?
I mean, 2020 has been regrettable on many levels, but one reason it's regrettable is. Impact of all of these communication changes has been. The numbers are great. They're all trending in the right direction, but at the end of the day.
Yes.
What needles are they moving? And I think, you know, it'll be a bit delayed, but I think this time next year, we'll probably get, get a sense of the degree of engagement. Engagement and what is open. Or whatever metric. So, it's regrettable, but it makes perfect sense why we didn't survey this. Nothing would have been representative.
And part of what we'll look at as we move forward is, are we asking the right questions at the right time? And can we make it easier for people to engage? Can we rebrand the. Right? A better response.
Yes. And I look forward to your end of the year report, which will cover this timeframe, which is the bigger question from the communication lens that I will find fascinating is. What channels worked? Those, you know, and what type of feedback can we get to adapt to whatever the next.
Absolutely.
Lack of a better word, crisis is, you know, and so, that'll be interesting, but we're in the middle of it still right now.
And the way that we are being much more intentional with our work around equity and diversity and how that is reflected in our communications efforts. We working very collaboratively on that. So, I think there'll be a number of highlights to share as part of that, especially as we've come through this pandemic crisis.
I think this is, I appreciate the. You have, as I've mentioned to Carol, but you, in the communication lens, have pivoted, that's not the right word, but you've had to pivot multiple times. And so, thank you for the communication that you've been involved in supporting the district to all of our.
Thank you very much.
Questions before we move on? Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is our superintendent's update.
Now, you've had a lot of content, but I've got a couple of things to share. That's okay. So, as you know, and you heard a little bit earlier, but I want to give you a little numbers. 100 students are currently, SPS students participating in Explore to Go, taking 11,500 courses. And then, you couple that with additional 19,000 launch students from across the state, taking 20,000, 26,000 courses, 1,200. 92,000 assignments in the first three days last week. So, school is back in session in SPS quickly, serving kids. And I can't express enough gratitude to the team as you can think about as we transitioned to remote learning and then we rebuilt Explore to Go. Teachers, the training that had to happen, the launch team that has made this transition successful to serve kids already is amazing. So, now, we're moving quickly to procedures for seated July and those are being finalized with feedback from the health professionals. Signed up for a seated experience in July. And we'll also continue to offer the virtual opportunity so they can learn in either way. And we'll continue to see what kind of enrollment we get over the next few weeks. In addition, our suburb grab and go meal never shut down. It just changed form. Three days a week at 15 sites, meals for all seven days, more than 1,500 customers coming to those school sites every other day right now, as well as the communications teams worked really hard to get information out about. Part of the stimulus package was EBT cards for free and reduced. Hard to get that communication out. So, those families can get access to resources as quickly as possible that they can use in lots of other ways beyond the meals that we're providing.
Are the numbers, what you expected with regards to the number of kids who are.
Showing up every day. So, passing out about several thousand meals by the time you do the multiplication. But I was hoping we'd get a little bit bigger. We knew that as we went through the remote learning that it staggered off a little bit. So, we'll continue to serve and try. As economic times changed, right, people have started to go back to work and maybe they're getting resources in a different way and other things are opening back up. But we're open for business. So, make sure that we tell people that are interested that that resource continues to be there, any student under the age of 18.
Probably are not.
Whether they were taking a class, whether they were really an SPS student, right, if they show up between the age zero and 18, we will serve them meals and provide that resource. I'd also want to thank Ivanya and her team through this time. We know that the pandemic crisis has followed. As well as our community. And Ivanya and her team worked quickly to get resources in the hand of our leadership team as well as our teachers because we knew students were re-entering our classrooms quickly. And our best assets to help students and families are our teachers and our leaders that were going to be. Provided last year as well as the facing racism training that we've gone through. Obviously, we're hitting the equity and diversity work at a very important time. And I am proud of the board for making that progress and look forward to continuing to make progress in those areas. And Ivanya's team's been. For anything that our staff may need, our students may need, or our families may need in this time that's incredibly emotional, I know, for our community and our nation. Shifting from the immediacy to now fall planning. So, we went from finish remote. Quite around the clock, but pretty darn close to redesign what that looks like. We're deploying teams that will include teachers and leaders around three or actually four primary categories, health, safety, and operations. We'll have a team, learning development. An overarching team that actually will fall into each one of those categories because they have to be supporting each of those areas. And we'll be seeking feedback from parents soon regarding what are the high priority things to take into consideration as we try to open in August. We're obviously going to learn a ton. Primary ways that we get feedback as well as these teams and other communication tools. And that will take place really over the next 20 to 30 days with some direct communication based on that planning to families, you know, probably mid-July regarding here are the design. August 24th. I know people would like to know, but I think there's a lot of unknown and we need to work through a lot of details and get a lot of feedback before we're ready to make those announcements. So, that's really the next month of work as deep for our team. They're up for the challenge. As good a people as. State and think we are equipped to handle this between our healthcare partners, between our technology infrastructure, all the things, our community partners. We have more resources and assets to serve our community than just anybody out there. So. The final thing, just a couple. Oh, 12-month employees have returned from remote work to all of our administrative sites and are busy doing the work that I just described. And we've had some great celebrations, obviously groundbreaking at the new Boyd Elementary School. The dirt is moving and things are happening. Great. Really excited about that product and the experiences that our kids will have on that all-inclusive playground. Those are some admin updates.
Yes, they are.
And I'm going to skip legislative. I think we've covered enough budget and legislative.
Please rest sometimes.
We will.
You need me to explain what that is?
We will. We'll find.
We appreciate.
A lot of people pulling hard for kids.
There has not been any rest.
Yeah, but there has to be rest.
We appreciate the update and we also appreciate. I imagine. So, we appreciate all that the team is doing. Moving this right along to our next agenda item, which is board comments. I'll ask if any of my fellow board members have any comments at this time.
So, I'm just. The state of technology in our buildings. And at that time, I do believe that you would walk in an elementary and find 25, maybe working desk computers sitting in a lab, one room in a building. And then, you might find. Labs in high schools. And then, I think that somewhere along there in 2014, 15, we moved to our Ignite Phase one, two, and three, in which students then obtained a device. So, we went. If we were. Kit and we were where we were with our technology in 2011, none of this in terms of online learning would have been possible. And without the forward thinking, without the planning and the, the planning and the . People just had a hard time keeping up. And we heard about that as board.
Myself included on the keeping up part.
Had that not happened, none of what our district has been able to pull off in like a two-week. Say is just amazing because I think in retrospect, someone would sit down and say it can't be done, but it was done. And I just have to, I want to throw that out for the team that were working 24/7. They basically were working 24/7 to get the curriculum in place to make this a reality. Dr. Jungman to make sure that every student had access to a device. Dr. Jungman, make sure that every student had access to a device. We just would not have been where we needed to be. So, so many thanks to his, you know. First few years, and it was hard for a lot of, a lot of folks in Springfield, and I can say that because I've been around so long. But it's so lucky for us that it happened and that we did it, and that's how we can be where we are today. IT folks that stepped up and got things in place, but the beneficiary of all, those that have benefited from all that are students, and that's what we're here for, students and their families. And so, thank you, John. Thank you to. Worked so hard to put all these learning classes in place. Talked to parents, and they will all certainly say thank you because they realize with having their children at home, what a very hard job it is to be an educator.
I would like to thank John Jungman and this board for seeing the need for diversity hire with Ivanya. We could not, well, we could have predicted what's currently happening in our country, and I am encouraging each and every board member not to turn away. I think that I am supportive of Ivanya, and I'm so grateful for this, this board for seeing the need for that role and for such a time as this.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Basically in the same place, and I just want to say thank you for the board who, for the board who has adapted for our Zoom board meetings that we were able to continue the work and communicate and share. So thank you for that. I'm going to move us forward with our upcoming meetings, June 19th, which is next Friday. Myself, Denise, Jerry, and Charles are signed up to attend the MSBA virtual. Virtual meeting next Friday. And then just as a reminder, we have our regular board meeting on our calendar for Tuesday, June 24th. And then we have just the, I'm sorry, June 23rd, and then, you guys are listening. And then Tuesday. Our next agenda item is any plus deltas for our meeting tonight? You can write it on a post-it note and hand that to Kathy on your way sort of out of the room and then back in. Yes, sort of out of the room and then back in. Our next agenda item is to. Executive session to discuss legal, personnel, and collective bargaining matters as provided in sections 610.21 subsections 1, 3, 9, and 13 of the revised Missouri statute. So moved. Okay. Already gone. Okay. Will record that vote.
It's emblematic of my feeling of how long we've been here.
We will take a quick break and the.